Oh, no, it's fine. I mean, I just get when people like that. It's been bothering me too. Yeah, but they just work on their Friday, so if I give up. So.
What this is?
Oh, I take more takes. Well, I think I'm gonna get hot up here, so. We're all in the hall, it's okay. I know. Everything, I know. Because I just travel, so. I mean, I'm negative, but I just don't want to. I was getting killed at home. Everybody, I know. My boys have both had it. Well, I've called it was negative twice, but I swear I think I have it. It's a fiance. How could you be negative if you see?
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order. We'd like to welcome everybody, and can we stand for a moment of silence followed by a pledge? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item number one, review of the agenda. Any questions?
I have a few requests for the word to consider. One of which is under the agenda, item. Seventh, it referenced the Blue Park County Early Childhood Education Center. And then item eight references the Park County preschool center. Shouldn't that be preschool and not Park County Early Childhood Education Center?
I would have to go back and look at, I think that was submitted based on how the BG was submitted.
Which preschool, wasn't preschool submitted? It says BG.
Miss Man, do you know the answer to that?
Because there is a distinction between those, is it correct?
Not necessarily. Early childhood is a preschool facility.
It's a preschool plus kindergarten facility.
But what we're doing right now is a preschool. And it doesn't have kindergarten with it, but you have the option to have a pre-K total. But in an early childhood center, I don't think that the language in that is gonna skew anything with what we're doing with the schematic design.
I think it, well, no, I don't either. I just like to be consistent with the language. And if the BG says preschool, or this says Early Childhood Education Center, whatever the BG states.
If you wanna make an amendment, that it will reflect once I can go back and pull the BG. Are we able to do that?
Yeah, you already did, right.
I agree with that. Make amendment to item seven to reflect the language of BG twenty-one dash twenty-two four seven.
I mean, you would need to vote on that.
Okay, and are there any more suggestions?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to add to the agenda and update on the field behind.
Justice.
Just, no. The Park County Football Field.
Which one?
Park County Youth Football Field.
Is this in reference to the?
Due to the vandalism that was done last year?
Yeah, it would be the woman on justice.
Huh?
I was trying to read your mind. Is it the woman on justice? Yeah, she said the woman on justice and you said no.
I'm sorry, you did, you read my mind.
I was trying to, I was trying to help.
Thank you.
Okay, someone split these into multiple ones. Does anybody else have any suggestions?
Just to make sure that we're consistent, I wanna also say that eight, the preschool construction project, so like those, that the motion will just be that number seven and number eight.
It would reflect the same language, yes, I agree.
Because if it is an early childhood center, and that's what the BG says, then we're gonna have one correct, and then the other one's still gonna have one correct.
That's correct.
So where would the justice? Where's it going?
You can make it a nine A.
And what are you wanting to know?
The status of what has been done, and if it's the damage that has been assessed, and who's doing what there. Also, there was a, in our October eighteenth meeting, we had a student achievement report that we had, actually, in that meeting, we canceled the twenty-fifth meeting. I was, and we was gonna start picking up that, I believe, in November. What is, I'd like to add to the agenda, a discussion on what's the plan to move forward with those those achievement reports.
They're gonna be embedded into what you see as the academic suite. If you look at item. Six. I'm sorry, not item six, item four and five. You'll see an academic suite update.
Can we, can we add that item as a discussion though, because, or we can discuss it now?
Well, I think we have to have it approved if you wanna discuss it, but we have an embedded academic suite update, which is going to give you student achievement information, as well as your CDEP.
I'd still like to add it to board, agrees to a panic.
Okay, you would wanna add that. Five B.
I guess I'm confused as to what the discussion is, if we have an academic suite update.
Well, that's the reason why we have the discussion. Like I said, we could discuss it now, or we could. You said we couldn't discuss it at the moment unless it's that is.
No, I actually reached out to you all to see if you had any questions or concerns, so if there was something I did need to include or be prepared for, I'd be more than happy to get that ready. You wanted to wait for the board meeting, so I'm just trying to make sure that I understand what you're asking when an academic suite update is already included in the agenda.
I'm not asking, I'm asking for, that's fine, we'll discuss that on that one hour.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add an discussion and approval to have our meetings and regular meetings and special meetings livestreamed.
Okay, where would you, if voted, where would you want to make up?
I think it would be like fifteen A. Fifteen A. Internal Board isn't it?
Okay, anything else?
Did I, miss, I thought we had a seven.
No, five.
Five, yeah, five A, B, and C. Did we not have a five A, B, and C?
You're referencing the attachments that went with the power schools contract.
Okay.
So not necessarily an agenda item, but you're looking at like the appendancy information.
I just wanted to check.
There was an agenda that went out yesterday for, that had those on there.
I just thought I got an email that said five A, B, and C, and then I could, okay. So you're saying it's still there, it's just not on the agenda?
Well, five A's on the agenda.
But there's no five B?
But those are, those are attachment documents that goes with five A.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have an, is anything else? Are they good? Okay, so we have two other motions to amend seven and eight to reflect the BG, for the language to reflect the BG one.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. And do you have a motion to put the field behind justice, the discussion of the current condition and update for that as nine A?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nine, motion carries three, two. The motion to add a fifteen A, do we have a motion, we, discussion and approval of live streaming meetings?
Who were the nays on that last one?
I was a nay.
Nay.
Bill, I'm, or Mr. Paulby, excuse me, I'm assuming you make the motion for.
Yes, make that motion for fifteen A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion denied, three, zero.
There is no fifteen A.
So we changed the language for seven and eight, we added a nine A. And that is it. So, do we have a motion to approve the updated agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And those opposed?
No.
Motion carries four, one. Approval of minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, special meeting, and January fourth, twenty twenty-two, special meeting. Any discussion, any questions?
I think Mr. Harris brought to my attention, I think there's some, and there's, what was it that you, my, something I voted on? I never did get a chance to go back and read it after you told me. There was something that he had messaged that he was concerned about, that there might have been some wording wrong on my end. On a vote, maybe?
Just a second, I think it was, but I don't remember exactly which one, so you said.
I know, and when you messaged me that, I wouldn't go back and look and get it.
For chair and vice chair, I believe you voted no for both, and it it only, in the minutes, it says you voted aye for chair. Is it correct that you didn't vote aye?
I voted nay.
So, do we, correct, how do we go about that?
So you need a motion to correct the agenda?
Do I get, wait, need to make a motion to correct the agenda to change Ms. Ritchie's vote from a y to an a?
Well, wouldn't be changing my vote, though.
Or meant to reflect that her vote.
Which, which, which meeting minutes are you? That have been like organizational meeting, yeah. Hold on, I'm trying to, yeah, I'm just navigating, sorry. No, you're fine.
It's under internal board business, and I'm number two.
Does that sound organizational, maybe? And what would help tremendously if you all would speak up a little?
Louder.
Yes, because it's hard with mask on, hearing who's making the motions and who's not.
No, I understand.
Thank you, that's nice.
Thank you.
So, is that it? Yeah, I guess so.
I make a motion to have the meetings reflect Ms. Ritchie's vote being appropriately documented as nay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five, zero. Do we, can we add off? Can we take care of these now? And now do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, and the corrected minutes from the January fourth, twenty twenty-two meeting?
Hold on.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Brenda? I'll just say my name, that'll be easier.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Okay, student staff and recognition.
Okay, great. Mr. Paulby, we're gonna actually assist Ms. Hendricks in handing out the ROTC, so we're gonna call Colonel Crump. Thank you. Do we wanna go ahead and just have our cadets come on up?
I'm gonna stand up so I won't be.
And go call out, and then hand to Mr. Paulby, please. And then everybody will come down and be ready to take a picture with our cadets.
You want us now?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you for reminding.
And before Mr. Paulby, Ms. Hendricks starts handing out the certificates and their presentations, a little. DC, okay. So our, great call, Stacey. GRC, I'm so sorry. GRC High School JR-OTC team competed in our all-service Raider National Six and Seven in November at the Gerald Lawthorne Scouting Base in Malona, Georgia. The men's team came in first overall in the nation, and the women's team came in fourth overall. Additionally, we had a senior, Logan Dawson, that competed and won the individual ultimate raider challenge event consisting of a woodland obstacle course run with a weighted pack. I believe it was thirty-five pounds? How much was the pack?
Roughly, yes.
Thirty-five pounds, I don't really remember, I was like, wow.
He added a little bit more.
It's like a small child you're packing around all day. Making him the twenty-twenty-one men's division ultimate raider national champion. The Raiders dominated the field more than the five-page team run, a rope, bridge, an obstacle course with awaited equipment, a woodland obstacle course also with weighted packs. The competition consisted of eighty-three teams, eighty-three teams, representing all service branches from the entire United States. Twenty-six different cadets competed. And Ms. Hendricks will be there as well, Mr. Paulby hands out certifications.
Logan Dawson, Commander Logan Dawson.
White, Embry. Tyler Black. Ryan McCord. William McCord. Beatty McPan. Cameron Bailey. Carter Gibson. Toby Patton. Ethan Messy. Herman Smith. Zach Lamb. And Tom Crepp. Guys, will we get some of you to come here so we can run a nine-year picture, please?
Yes.
I don't think the tallest should be taller. Lamb. Or white. Yeah, Lamb's there.
Oh, I'm sorry, what are we supposed to be there?
No, I think we're good. One, two, three, ready? Okay, surely one of them is good. He did subscribe to national champion, so for our long-time sister, the standing ovations.
Yes, sir.
Rocket. The sky runs. In my neighborhood, my neighborhood, every time I see rain, sleet, snow, there goes anything. Nice, ROTC. He's just constantly running.
Good job. Guys, ladies, I'm so sorry, hi, never separated. You want a hat there? Don't be insulted, it is decorated by coral. Okay, Clark, who's number two? Can I enter a landing? Mackenzie Roper. Simone Kim. Rhea Mueller. Lilian Mary. Tara Daniels. Ally Hendricks. Haley Wood. Carson Carroll. And Monica Cruz. Carson. Yeah, I don't know.
Mom, don't be around my house.
All right, are we ready?
Well, I think I've worked.
All state. Okay, now it's choir.
Okay. The vendors are gonna get out certificates for our junior, high, seventh grade, all-state choir. So these contestants completed a rigorous audition process, where they were selected to perform in Kentucky man organizations, all-state and those who play on. So please come up and we can hear them. Olivia Root. Okay, Wyatt Jackson. Aiden Henson. Tyler Crawford. And Landon Hardy. Okay, then we'll do one picture altogether, guys. Are we ready? Everybody's always smiling, other than us. All right, thanks, Olivia. Did this progress well? Okay, guess what, Ms. Man, she won three, too. This guy does so much, we really appreciate him, and RDC does fabulous job, but not does only their great program, but making sure that GRC is a great program too, and collaborates with Pacers. So they, they have interaction both ways, so we really appreciate you.
Well, thank you, we love it.
Now, we're gonna do our attendance order, so the preschool elementary winner is Shear or Mr. Kennedy can come up and claim his banner.
Yeah, retract that baby. Woo, like this here.
Our secondary award winner is Baker, and we have somebody else who's coming up to collect for Baker, here we go. Mr. Mount is missing it tonight.
Oh, congratulations, thank you. The ball, it's not that bad, it looks. It looks for heavy.
We should rehearse for it. And the overall intended school winner is Strode Stasia.
They're here to get it, they go ahead and they're raising everything off the door.
Congratulations, Strode.
Okay, and I, I know that everybody's ready to get down to business, but business would not happen if it weren't for having dedicated public servants that don't get enough, and they take a whole lot in order to serve our community. And a large part of that service to the community is through serving your school district, that's the word I did page in there. So we'd like to recognize our board members tonight, we're gonna start with our main chair, Ms. Hendricks.
So I've had a collection of some things that when I handed you a certificate, and then looked everybody down there. So a few things about Ms. Hendricks. She is a woman that does, has her hand in a lot of projects, she also helps coordinate and serve on our Winchester Old Fashioned Parade. Ms. Hendricks has passions around community involvement and service, building high-quality programs, she's a big advocate, just so they're getting the chances to connect with the school systems. She always tries to get me in touch with people in the know around foundations that we need to make sure that we partner with. She also has a heart for justice and issues that can be taken to excellence in her mediation skills. She has the ability to bring people together, she values her family, she's got two twins that are usually wanting to fight over tractors, from what she tells me. And I have a lot of respect for Ms. Hendricks, so we appreciate her service, thank you. Terry Richardson. So Ms. Richardson has a heart for especially the downtown area.
You're welcome, and we'll get off, I'll get a picture in just a second.
Ms. Richardson makes a point to connect me with folks that's similar to those events, also make sure that I get in touch with other businesses, to make sure that we have. we have opportunities for students to possibly do some co-op opportunities or get job skills after they, um, you know, not graduate, but during the school. She wants to get kids working. Uh, she works closely with, uh, programs that actually get kids connected, uh, like the early learning center, uh, I think Mr. Harris and Ms. Hendr-, or, sorry, Ms. Richardson actually connected during COVID when you were working at, uh, Bo's place, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, we really appreciate her involvement in the community. Ms. Ritchie. She has been our longest serving board member of over nine years. Am I correct?
Yeah, I'm on my eleventh.
Eleventh year. Ms. Ritchie has a heart for, uh, kids in just about every area. I don't know if you all realize, she coaches, um, I think, uh, football youth league. She does cheerleading. Uh, she's always making sure that people get connected, uh, with the right person when they have questions about how school's going, whether it's concerns or whether it's, uh, suggestions on how we can be better. Um, her mom was also an instructional assistant, we think. Am I correct? Okay, so she had worked here. Um, also, she has partnered with the community in those youth, uh, sports programs. So she's the first one to make sure that I know when sit-atan or upwards or anything like that is going on so that we can share those resources with our principals. She's very approachable, humorous, and clearly cares about ensuring opportunities for students to socialize. Uh, she has a heart for, uh, those most marginalized communities so that they have access to resources. She works tirelessly to make sure that students do have the best and also upgraded technology, um, resources available for them. So thank you so much. Mr. Tolby. Mr. Tolby has a heart. I'm trying to lick my finger through my mouth. So, Mr. Tolby, um, has a big heart for preschool. So tonight is a nice night for him to, uh, he served on the superintendent's search committee. He also is very, uh, engaged in, uh, the overall, not just one sport, but equity of all sports and access for our students within our community or within our schools to make sure that they have those opportunities available to them. And. She left cookies in order, too. He also has, um, everyone's had to say he has a lot of questions. He's very thoughtful and purposeful in his responses. He's approachable and, uh, this person was also very impressed with his heart. So we appreciate Mr. Tolby. Thank you. Ms. Concedon, how many years?
On the board, one.
One year on the board. At the Clark County Schools.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five. Uh, so Ms. Concedon is a, uh, wealth of information and a great resource, uh, especially to me as a new superintendent trying to continue to learn context for our school, um, and where we were, where we need to go, and how we're gonna get there. So I bounce a lot of ideas off of her. She's very involved in, uh, social emotional learning projects throughout, uh, Clark County and, uh, very thoughtful and supportive and I'm afraid to ask some of those tough questions that we need so that we can be engaged and push each other to, uh, be better for our community. She's very dedicated to student achievement. Um, I'm rather kind as an educator and a board member. She works hard to make sure of the instructional strategy assessments and curriculum that we're implementing and is done so with the double. So we appreciate you. And, not a board member, but a. So Mr. Harris, uh, and I have, are becoming good friends and he, uh, has, does important research for us. He keeps us all on our toes with text messages and emails to get us engaged and, uh, making sure that we're also doing, uh, right by students and by our leaders. So we appreciate our board members. It's a tough job. They don't get enough recognition and they get too much of our time. But we do appreciate them and we hope that, uh, they, uh, they value it to be in the center a little bit. And I'll take you back to the table. You're welcome.
Okay. Public. Public comment, we have two, um, people signed in for public comment. Um, Hudson Klein, would you like to come forward? Thank you, Miss Bonfield.
Yeah, we actually did and I think we moved it when they were getting ready. Ms. Bonfield, do you mind putting it?
I scooted it.
The middle? Is that better? Do I need to move this slide? Is that okay?
You don't have to.
Okay.
Hello, um, thank you for letting me speak.
Just, just, I just wanna kinda lay some ground rules. I'm sorry, just so you're clear. Public comment is strictly that, public comment. Um, it's not a time to look for like a question and answer type session. It's just public comment. Kind of, it is what it is. And we ask that you, um, try to keep your, your statement under two minutes. Thank you.
Not much to say. I just wanted to, I just had a concern about NTI, especially for, uh, people not like in town, farther out where there's not much wifi. Cause most NTI is just wifi based. And I've been having a lot of problems with, um, my grades and all that because of NTI cause every time I, I can't turn in, cause I have no internet. And I have a lot of friends, too, that also have the same problem. And. Like my grades have been falling because I was doing pretty good, all As and stuff like that. But then ever since the NTI hit, my grades have plummeted to Fs and Ds and I know there's no real easy solution to NTI because of COVID and all that. And I know it's stressful for us all, but I was hoping maybe there could be some possible solution to it all because my education's getting hurt from something I can't control. So I was just hoping I could, you know, inform you about some of the royal, royal areas of the district.
Mr. Klein actually contacted me. He's in my district. Um, and, well, his grandmother did. Part of it is, is they have told him that he needs to go out and find internet service whenever we have NTI days. Well, if it's in, if it's weather, he can't get out to get to the internet service. Sorry, I'm just kinda trying to help you out here because I know you're forgetting some of your points, uh, which makes sense. We're telling them to stay in, stay safe. He can't get out to the internet. So it's kind of what he was bringing in front of the board and wanted everybody to understand is out in the country where we are, you don't get the internet. And I know Sherri and all them knew I was having that same trouble last year. So I get what you're saying and I know that was one of your points. I just wanna make sure that that was kind of addressed.
Do you have a way to contact him?
If not, I can get you one.
Okay.
Cause, yes.
I appreciate you coming forth and I know it was, we said no time. This wasn't a time for discussion, but I feel like this is a little unique situation. But Dr. McComas has taken notes and, um, we're gonna make sure Ashley, Ms. Ritchie, has your contact information and, um, get you in touch with the right people and do everything we can to, to help you get to where you wanna be.
Thank you for your time.
No, you're welcome. Thank you for coming to speak.
Yeah, we're really proud of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have our very own Ms. Ashley Ritchie, district vice rep.
Yeah.
Like to share the comment.
District what?
It says district vice rep.
Yes. It's okay.
What's district five?
I'm the.
That's my district. Bye. I'm sorry. I didn't hear the number. I gotcha.
Pardon all my gettys here. Alright, I've got two minutes as Megan told me, so, but I wrote it down.
I believe we can make some exceptions.
Good evening. I decided to sign in and speak today because of a very special little girl in my district. As many of you have had the opportunity to read the story in the Winchester Sun, and if you haven't, I suggest that you do, about a smart and independent little girl named Zoe Anne that decided to write a letter to her principal about teachers being able to wear blue jeans. You see, Zoe Anne's mom and I were pregnant at the same time, so I have literally watched this child grow up and her and my son are a few weeks apart. With permission from Zoe Anne's mom, Courtney, I stand before you today to tell you all what makes this letter so extra special. Zoe Anne is autistic. She did not speak actual words until around the age of five, maybe six. For her to write this letter is proof of the amazing teachers, therapists, and principals we have in this district. For that, I say thank you. And of course, the determination of one little girl that has already been to more doctor's appointments, one therapy, more therapy appointments than many of us will go to in a lifetime. I want to say a special, special thank you to Ms. Rock for taking the time to write Zoe Anne back and appreciating the thought she put into her letter. I told Courtney when I spoke with her after reading the letter, I can see a future class president and even a future lawyer or anything else she wants to be. She is one determined little girl, as she has proven over and over. In closing, if you read Zoe Anne's letter, part of it included this. A pearl necklace can dress up any outfit. The male teachers can make sure their face is clean since they don't wear pearl necklaces. Am I right? Well, I have to say, well said, Zoe Anne. A pearl necklace can make me feel good in any outfit. So in honor of Zoe Anne, and I don't know if you all have seen this on the internet, but everybody has been placing hashtag jeans and pearls for Zoe Anne. So in honor of Zoe Anne and Board Member Appreciation Month, I thought I would bring each of you some pearls to wear with your jeans. Thank you.
Can you bring a washcloth?
What?
For the guy.
I asked you about your pearls today and you told me that you had it under control.
Thank you.
You want pearls for Dana?
I didn't hear five. Really, don't know it.
What?
Yeah, that's so great.
Get to your mama. Thank you, number two. Thanks, Zoe Anne. And make sure you all do hashtag jeans and pearls.
We'll get a picture after, we'll stick around and make sure we get a picture because she would really like that.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that was fun.
See, you were scared.
And that's, you know, it's all, anyway. A student, learning and instructional services. Number four, comprehensive district improvement plan, Ms. Julie Bonfield.
Oh, hi.
You've got some hard acts to follow, Ms. Bonfield. I know.
I didn't.
Oh, wait, I skipped you. Uh, I mean, I got to you too soon.
It's my turn. We all got excited.
The pearls threw me off. So we're really at superintendent's report, but you be on deck because you're.
I'm on deck.
I, um, I gave you all a, a print copy of the, of the report because I had it in my personal drive and, uh, Ms. Nance and I didn't get it transferred over. But I will say that I won't, uh, read everything, but I'll give you all highlights. Uh, you also received your packet of our project, our cardinal lead that Ms. Bonfield and her academic suite leads out with a lead connect newsletter has all of our activities, uh, and important information for building leaders. Under strategic leadership, two of the most pressing things that I believe I've been working on are, uh, again, continuing to work on the staffing allocations. Those allocations, uh, meetings actually start tomorrow that are becoming, they're tentative, but we're actually, uh, getting to see the, how that frames out with RDC, GRC, and Baker. The week after that, we'll have elementary schools. The week after that, we'll meet with Phoenix and preschool. It's important to note that we're currently not aligned with our staffing formula. So building leaders, directors, superintendents are gonna continue to vet positions based on need, desire of programming, but that has to be aligned with our staffing formula. Also, our preschool, um, schematic design. We had some great meetings there. Our architects are here, so they'll share more of that with us later. Under standard two instructional leadership, our cardinal lead, uh, PLC is working on, uh, a true MTSS model, which is multi-tiered systems of support. It takes us past RTI for behavior and academics and really rounds out, um, how school systems need to be responding, meeting students where they're at, um, so that they can be, uh, more well-rounded and that we can actually meet their needs focusing on tier, strong tier one instruction and not so much on push-up models. Like we need to get resources back into our classrooms. And so that's what, uh, the cardinal lead is and, uh, Ms. Bonfield and Ms. Henderson will be sharing some of that information with you. Under cultural leadership, I just kinda listed, uh, just some highlighted events that were really near and dear to me, um, that I've attended throughout, um, the month, this past month. Some of those include the Clark County Heritage Museum. One evening, my husband and I did date night. We did a lecture series with Colonel Cecil's ROTC. Colonel Crupp is still here. Um, he actually had about 12 or 13 cadets that came. It was really a nice evening that we all got to spend time fellowshipping together. The Sheer Duck Jungle Book Performance Musical was exceptional. Uh, several sporting events from wrestling to girls' or boys', uh, basketball, volleyball, math showcase at Baker was fabulous. And then some community, other community events was the legislator preview one evening at BCTC. Um, one of my most privileged times was the community prayer service, um, with pastors, community leaders from our community that took time to pray for, um, board members, uh, community, uh, leaders, the sheriff, uh, health workers. It was a really powerful morning and I appreciated being there. And then I also attended some meetings at Phoenix for the, uh, there, we had to do it by Zoom, but I got to go to their treatment staff meeting. And then I wa, uh, went over to Bourbon County last Thursday and attended their board meeting just so I could have more context of other board meetings besides other districts that I've been in and this one. Under standard four, some of the post-secondary partnerships, um, actually, Dr. Parrish is leading the work on this, extending partnerships with Morehead UK, EKU, and others to actually get teachers placed with us. So it gives us an idea of what their work experience will be like, what their dispositions will be like. So it's kinda like you get a preview for that. So she's doing a lot of work there. Uh, we're also working on improving processes. Something else that Dr. Parrish will be sharing tonight is about power schools. So it's taking these three or four different, uh, products and us getting just to one product. And then we get to expand some services with that so that we can become more digitized or avoid redundancy, like three and four people will touch things. So you'll get to monitor the workflow. Um, managerial leadership, so to our young man in the back, NTI for inclement weather. We've utilized six of those days. Overall, we've had good coordination of communication that's timely. We're making sure that that flexibility that we can have with NTI allows families to know in the evening, whenever possible, instead of waiting until five o'clock in the morning. And it's really important for moms and dads that are trying to get childcare arranged, uh, when roads are, uh, and we're looking at roads from the perspective of new drivers, you know, kids that just got their driver's license and buses. So I just wanna make that clear because sometimes we're like, every, uh, we should be able to go out and get on these roads. Well, new drivers and buses will have more difficulty. And again, back to those rural areas, we have issues there, too. Um, I also started communicating, uh, with our mayor and judge. I send them information, our police chief and our, uh, sheriff, and then also the Winchester Sun. So after that call is made, before it's really going, uh, public, we're also making sure just other people in the community are aware of that. We do that now. It's synced for the news media, social media, website, email, all call and text. It all happens simultaneously, just so that people aren't getting mixed information. Under collaborative leadership, um, our ATC principal selection, we have decided to continue with Mr. Kendrick, who's agreed to be our interim principal. Gives us time to really do some, um, good work at the ATC on programming. So we're looking at those things with him so it gives us, uh, gives me a better scope, honestly, on what I need to be doing with a new principal. Through that, we're also revisiting the CLNA, which is around Perkins Fund. So that's a regional thing that we have to work on. It's not just ATCs, but also like your agri-science teachers so that we can maximize the funding revenue that can come to us. Um, I got to participate in coordinating, uh, the Western Kentucky tornado relief. Uh, it was supposed to start off with like 15 buses. It turned into 70 and we had about 15 tra, trucks and trailers here. We served as the hub. I got to partner with the sheriff and police chief again to get staff to, um, you know, block off roads so that those buses could stay together before they got to their next one. Also met with our KEA representative again on NTI, some things that he was hearing from students as well as teachers. Under standard seven, influential, uh, leadership, I have, and I see Ms. Joelle on here for a different reason, I'm sure, but Ms. Reed and Mr. Manley and I met with BCTC. We just discussed different barriers for students, expanded opportunities for dual credit. Also, the competition that sometimes can exist between ATC programming and BCTC. Like we wanna avoid overlap. So if ATC is offering something, we wanna complement what BCT is offering and vice versa. So that's gonna help. We're gonna be able to, to make some of those services better. And then revisit, like our industrial. And then revisit like our industrial maintenance program. We have a program that BCTC can teach night classes with, and we can also have better, stronger dual credit opportunities for our kids. So we're going to work on those partnerships. What I'm most excited about may not come to fruition is that we're going to be meeting with Senator Alvarado and Representative Dodson. That you have more flexibility with your keys money, but what you don't have flexibility with is the work-ready scholarship. So if you graduate high school, anybody out there can go get an associate's for free if there's five domains in that work-ready scholarship. Like carpentry, something in the healthcare, automotive manufacturing, there's two others, I can't remember what they are. But if you're in high school and you want to get that same associate's degree, you have to pay for it or apply your keys money. And then when you graduate, that work-ready scholarship's gone. So we want to advocate to push that work-ready scholarship down to the high school level so that we can get juniors and seniors to graduate with an associate's degree, then have more leverage with their keys money. I don't know if anything's going to come up, come of it, but we're going to be a rolling rock and we're going to try to get some action going with that.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah. I get excited, Ms. Reed.
So that's, I mean, that's, that's great and I like that. Is that, is there, is there courses at the high school competing with courses at ATC? And if so, is it because of this, you know, the associate degree that they can get from the high school?
Not so much between the ATC and our high school, but there are some, there is some overlap between ATC and BCTC. So one thing that we worked out, or not worked out, but they're actually still working through, they called us and we had a meeting because they wanted to introduce, I think I brought that two board meetings together, associates of arts and computer science. Is that correct, Ms. Reed? And so we found out that there were some classes BCTC was offering that we're also offering at the ATC. And if we, if they, if we wanted our kids to go there, then it was going to hurt our numbers at the ATC. They didn't want that to happen. And so they're working that structure differently so that either the kids can take it at our, you know, at the ATC and get that credit, so that it gets applied, but we'll have to do a dual credit model or we are going to have to reevaluate if we're teaching that so that it can be sliced into their program. So there's some overlap, but we're starting to recognize those things and we can't eliminate it all at once. It's going to have to be like some slow processes. But just sitting down at a table and getting to evaluate things, and they work really closely with Ms. Mink, who's our senior counselor at the high school. So that's going to keep getting better. So we do have some overlap between some things at BCTC and ATC.
But there's no comparative classes at the high school that's competing against ATC classes?
I cannot give you a definite answer, but they work closely, they work more closely because they're in-house to avoid that duplication. So, but I will get some more information on that too. You're welcome. Also CKEC and KEDC Board of Directors meetings, again, that's through that successful advocacy and that's the same list that I presented to you last month. So that, and then I got to meet, I'm going to skip the KESA cohort 10 real quick. But I got to meet with Senator Alvarado and Representative Dodson separately with just me to go over these bullet points up here. And I just really appreciated their time because they're busy, but I got to provide input. I got to ask questions. And it was just really nice to be able to have, have that one-on-one time with them. And then of course, Dr. Carter is here from KESA. And we had our cohort 10 meeting, which is around staffing allocation. So I appreciate that. It was very timely. We also are looking at the analysis of our leadership practice inventory. I'm also attending a serving leader community cohort here in Clark County that has several executive leaders within our community. And so that's a valuable time. It's a five-month series that I'm going to be doing and the focus is around being a better servant leader, empowering other leaders in your, your organization to be servant leaders and then encouraging servant leaders within your community so that we can all just really capitalize on working together through a collaborative effort. And then I'm working with Kentucky River Foothills, former, or he's actually a former colleague of mine in another area. But we have a program here that's underutilized. And like right now, we've got, it's, you know, freezing temperatures, below freezing temperatures. We have low turnout into our Kentucky River Foothills that's over there on Alpha Meadow, I believe, Meadow Street. So we're just trying to increase awareness, especially through our frisso, Ms. Bush. She will be kind of leading the charge with that to make sure that our family resources, directors can push families there first. Like the cares program, there's like $800 if a family was affected in any way by COVID and they're struggling with, you know, transportation or a job. So there's a lot of resources that our community doesn't know about that can be helpful. The other novel idea, you know, I'm glad you're sitting down, have you ever thought about helping somebody before their electric got shut off? Helping somebody before their water got shut off. Instead of waiting for it to get shut off, then paying a $30 reconnect fee or whatever it is. So this program allows them to be more proactive instead of a reactive. So I'm really excited about that work. And then I'm also been selected as one of the few superintendents to sit on the KDE Option 7 Task Force. Dr. Parrish also does a lot of work with our staff on how to get alternate certification. Sometimes we don't have, we have great people, but they don't have the best experience because they're not being properly prepared. So we're actually getting really ahead of that and I'm trying to work with another team of superintendents and different directors from other organizations with KDE to help higher ed prepare better alternate route certification. So this is different than the Option 6. This is another layer of how we're getting more teacher, more folks to decide that they should have been teachers to begin with, that they had already, you know, went through education. So that's what the Option 7 is. And then I listed dates there that I won't read off to you. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them and then try to get more information for you.
Any questions? Okay, I'm told that we need to go back. Sorry, Ms. Bonfield. Yes, put you on hold again. And that Judge Branham needs to read a proclamation for school board appreciation.
Thank you.
Sorry, we forgot.
Being so patient.
I'm sorry.
You're being so patient.
We are very patient.
Thank you both. Ms. Joellen Reed.
You're welcome.
Yep. Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. McComas, we appreciate the opportunity to come tonight as Vice Mayor Reed and myself to express to you and to the public and to our whole Clark County Public School system, how much we appreciate you in this community. So.
Clark County Kentucky Proclamation honoring the members of the Clark County Board of Education during School Board Recognition Month, January 2022. Now, there's a lot of whereas's in here. But this one doesn't ask if you fought with a deadly weapon, so. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children. And whereas Brenda Considine, Megan Hendricks Chair, Sheri Richardson Vice Chair, Ashley Ritchie, and William Talby contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Clark County Board of Education. And whereas these decision-makers are responsible for maintaining strong, effective budgetary oversight, high standards for employment and a safe, well-managed set of school facilities. And whereas these board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and a commitment to our children's futures. And whereas January 2022 marks Kentucky's observation of their contributions through School Board Recognition Month. Now therefore, we Winchester Mayor Ed Bertner, Winchester Vice Mayor Joellen Reed, and Clark County Judge Executive Henry Branham do hereby proclaim the month of January 2022 throughout this community as School Board Recognition Month and urge all citizens, all citizens, to honor Brenda Considine, Megan Hendricks Chair, Sheri Richardson Vice Chair, and William Talby for their service. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you so much. And the mayor would love to have been here tonight, but he is suffering, or I shouldn't say suffering, he's recovering from a broken ankle.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you guys. Okay, now for this part time. Student Learning and Instructional Services, number four, comprehensive district improvement plan, Ms. Julie Bonfield.
Oh, okay.
All right. So I'm going to talk about the comprehensive district improvement plan that has to be approved every January or brought to you all every January, which is kind of just a culmination of a series of diagnostics that our schools have to complete. And then we take those diagnostics and then we compile our district improvement plan. Because of, I guess, the craziness of this year, we did not meet with stakeholders. I mean, of course, I've met with building administrators and principals and stakeholders within the building. But I want to, my hope is to next year, actually build that further out into community to bring more people in, to get more ownership into this district improvement plan. It's definitely a plan that is not set in stone just because it's due January 1st. We can easily always go back and revise, edit, change, whatever we need to do with that. We also take this plan and it is in our base team meeting, so we meet every Monday as a base team here at Central Office. So I'm going to constantly be bringing up components of this district improvement plan and getting feedback with that as the year progresses in hopes that next year also that we're able to change and then add to it, make it better. Okay? So I have the actual district improvement plan. It's in, I think Ms. Arlene said it was in your file. But this is just a snippet of what the plan actually is. Yeah, they're going to show you. Just some foundational things that is embedded into our CDEP that you're going to see is of course, comprehensive literacy, professional development. Our PLC process, professional learning communities. We are really focusing on our PBUS model, which is our positive behavior, support system, technology, response to intervention, looking at our scores and data and making plans, instructional decisions within our buildings as we do that. So if you look at our first one, this data that you're seeing in the district improvement plan is from the school report card of 2019. Okay, so this is not current data, but the state told us we had to use school report cards from 2019. So our assessment system is kind of doing an overhaul this year. This year will be more of a benchmark for our students. And then hopefully within our three-year plan, as we develop our CDEPs, we can reach those goals and actually have some real-life data as we begin planning some more. So you'll kind of see reading and math there, proficient distinguished for elementary, middle, and high. And then our novice students for elementary, middle, and high in math as well. Again, the next one, our data there is for our writing proficient distinguished. And then our novice, that's always been an area, writing is something that as a, as our academic suite is talking, we're of course still having conversations about our writing in the classroom. Now we have to have our gap component and that's our students with disabilities and how they're performing in the classroom. So developing a plan as we look at these numbers. So our students with disabilities scoring proficient and distinguished in reading and math, you can see those numbers there. So our first goal is our proficiency and gap goal. I kind of combined those two together for you. So you'll see by 2025, again, that's the three-year mark. So hopefully by 2025, we're going to have three years of stable data that we can look at and hopefully reach these goals. We'll increase our proficiency index, combined reading and math in our elementary to 60.5. Middle will be 70.6 and then our high will be 50.2. So that's combining our proficient distinguished scores across those areas. And then of course, by 2025, looking at our gap students or our students with disabilities, increase proficiency from 31.5 to 37.7 in elementary, 59.9 to 70.6 in middle school, and 6.3 to 21.7 in high. And then addition, I've added an additional goal there is that Clark County Public Schools will decrease the percentage of students with disabilities scoring novice by 10%. So that's a goal that we've looked at. So as you're looking, so underneath, those are our goals, our objectives underneath each one of those. I just kind of shortened that down for reading. That is within our year. So hopefully by spring of 2022, the data that we're going to see there is 58.3 to 60.3 for our elementary. Reading for middle school, 62.9 to 67.7. And our high school from 49.9 to 52.2. So using those and looking at our literacy strategies across the district, we have a lot going on in our academic suite. So looking at standards alignment, really focusing on our case assessments, how those standards are aligning, what the standards look like in the classroom. How are we assessing those standards in the classroom and then looking at that data, analyzing it, and being intentional with that data with the instruction that we're giving kids. Professional learning communities, so we're actually collaborating vertically and horizontally in all of our buildings to make sure that we're having those strong conversations about kids, about instruction and how we can move them. Of course, evidence-based strategies, data analysis, those are all things that we would do. Math is pretty much the same thing. As we look at that, really focusing on those standards and you can see the scores there. 56.1 to 58.3 for elementary, middle is 56.8 to 61.1. And then our high school scoring proficiency, 38.1 to 40.9. So reading and math are very similar in our strategies for attacking that. Our gap, looking at that goal, our students with disabilities, 31.5 to 37.7 for elementary. Middle is 59.9 to 70.6. And then our high is 6.3 to 21.7. So really looking at our students with disabilities is support that co-teaching model, collaborating with our exceptional children department and having them actually work with our general education teachers for strategies with our students with disabilities. The next one, our goal three is separate academic indicator. And so that is our science and writing goal. So you'll see there increase that. 40.3 for elementary, 45.5 for middle, and 41.2 for high as calculated through science, social studies, and our writing scores across the district. Percentage of students scoring at or above proficiency in writing will increase by at least 5% annually. So we have talked as a department to focus on writing and think about how we're teaching writing within our buildings to hopefully increase that. So you'll see our targets for those for science and writing. If you go down, our next goal is our growth goal. This year, our universal screener is Star Reading and Star Math. This actually took the place of MAP from NWEA. So our growth goal for this is that our students in three through eight will demonstrate growth in reading and math combined as measured by Star Reading, Star Math data. So we're saying 100% of our students will show growth this year as measured by Star Reading and Star Math. So just some objectives to go along with that. You will see, and we'll talk about that in a little bit with our academic suite, is to develop that MTSS system, school-wide protocol, a process, information of frequency within instructions within our classrooms, interventions, programs, strategies, and progress monitoring. Also, the second one is interventionist, working with PLCs and students to establish a rigorous culture of learning. So actually taking in our interventionists within each building and talk about those students that they're servicing and what does their data look like? And what interventions are they using with our students to hopefully close that gap? So the hope is our academic department will be meeting with our interventionist and having conversations with them. We'll actually go into their buildings, support them as best we can. So if they need resources, if they need extra professional development, we're going to be there to wrap around them to help with those students. Okay? Goal five is transition readiness. So looking at this, Clark County Public Schools will increase percentage of students who are transition-ready in grades eight and 12 by 50%. And so you'll kind of see, we've talked about determining a baseline data of percentage of students meeting benchmark at grades three through eight, 12, and 12 based on spring 21 data. And again, that's looking at data from last year. And we're going to calculate that, our school and district data. We're going to start creating some SMART goals, having conversations at our middle and high about that. And then again, just ensuring ongoing professional development for those teachers. Okay, the last one is graduation rate. By 2024, Clark County Public Schools will maintain or exceed the rate of students graduating at 97.8%. And y'all, that's an incredible percentage. So looking at that and what they're doing and all of that has really been great. So we've talked and I've taken a lot from their school improvement plan at GRC and how they're using that. And I've incorporated this into our plan, is assigning at-risk students to targeted interventions during their flight time. So they have like an advisory time that they're meeting with students during that intervention time to help. Counselors at each grade level will ensure that students complete their IOP, so having conversations about that. And then student conferencing will occur on a regular basis and discussions will support. And then student conferencing will occur on a regular basis and discussions will support that culture of learning. I was really quick for a very long document. Any questions about that?
So you said some lofty goals on several, well, several specific goals for each goal. How did you come up with your targets that you have, that you put on?
So the way the Department of Education wanted us to set our goals is we did a trajectory. And so they took data from the previous, from the last five years. And we had, we put it into an Excel sheet, and it did a trajectory for us. And that's how those goals, that's how it was given to us. So it's based on that last five years' data and how we performed to how we, you know, how they decided on that. So that wasn't something that I just come up, you know, with the note. Yeah, so it was that trajectory that they set for us.
And the only other question I have is, and I know you mentioned I ask a lot of questions, so I think it's important to ask a question. The elementary schools, it's not broken, nothing is broken down by its schools. Is there a way that we could get that information for school too?
Absolutely. You know, that's one thing that as we're looking at it and looking, and we do, we can do individual schools, but we're really focusing on that cohesiveness in elementary, building those strategies and building capacity within all of our elementaries. So we are having conversations and individual conversations at each building, but yeah, I can get that for you. And if you all would like me to report every elementary, I mean, I can do that.
I mean, I love the idea of the district working together to the individual schools, but I still, I think that'd be nice to see.
Broken down. Yeah, absolutely. I can do that. Anything else? Okay, all right.
I think this requires some, does it require an approval?
I think so. I don't, I never really got clarification if it was an approval or if it was just that it's on the minutes that it has been presented.
Did you see that it had to be reviewed?
Just reviewed.
Yeah, it was just reviewed. Yeah, no vote, it's just reviewed, I'm sorry. Well, any more questions, discussion? Five, academic suite update?
All right, yeah, me again. So on January 13th, we, our cardinal lead PLC that we have once a month with our leaders in our district, we began the process of our MTSS, so multi-tiered system of support trainings and really looking at data. And instead of focusing so much on academics for the first few months, we're really looking at behavior. So we're gonna start talking about just that positive behavior supports that are within all of our buildings. Because if behavior is not under control, it's very hard with academics to succeed. So really talking about, in January, we focused on our district-wide supports and what we have in place. We are developing that MTSS framework. District teams were established. So this semester, we actually, when we have our cardinal lead PLC on Thursday, I'm meeting with our district MTSS team on the following Thursday to kind of talk about what we've learned during that time. And then the following week after, all of the school teams are meeting. And so this work will be going on, hopefully with beginning full implementation of August 2022. So we are not changing anything that is currently in place. We are building those teams, those teams are going out into their colleagues, working with, you know, their peers, their colleagues, and they're talking about those systems and what would be successful within their building. So that's how that is going. So you can kind of see our schedule there for January, February, March, and April. February is a time, February 9th, we have actually started a universal screener that our district has purchased called Terrace Metrics, which provides more of the social-emotional learning component for our students. And I know Ms. Bush may have more to say about that social-emotional component. But looking at that universal screening data, that's gonna allow us to look at specific kids, how are they feeling, that external/internal behavior, and then start discussing that. So February 10th, we're actually collaborating with Megan Martin, who is, used to be at the University of Louisville, and I think now she is at CKEC. And she is working with us on that as we develop those trainings and looking at that data. So after we look at data, then we're gonna have conversations within our buildings about what structures are in place. Now we have it, what do we do with it? So talk about interventions with our, working with our counselors, our student assistance teams, and how we're gonna wrap around those students that need those supports. Looking at our STAR data, and again, Mr. Talby, this is all of our elementary. But you'll kind of see, I'm not doing, I'm not presenting on novice apprentice proficient and distinguished. And you'll see a lot of at or above benchmark, on watch, intervention, or urgent intervention. One reason I'm not doing that is because our district, or not our district, but our state, our assessment system, that we really don't know how we're gonna be measured yet. So I hate to report on our data as novice apprentice proficient and distinguished when that's really not a true picture, a true indication of how our students are performing. So when I look at at or above benchmark, we're talking about students that are scoring 50th percentile and above. And so research will typically tell us that students that score 50th percentile or above, they're on grade level on this. On watch is that 11, 20, I'm sorry, 25 to 49th percentile. And then you'll see intervention and urgent intervention. Urgent intervention is 10th percentile and below. So that's how we're looking at those scores when you see that. So if you look at early literacy, those scores are a little skewed, to be honest, because we've had our kindergarten, they tested in the winter, they did not test in the fall. They also, some of our first graders took early literacy and star reading as well. So with early literacy, you have to make a combined score of an 827 for it to even register on star reading. And if it didn't, a lot of our students went back and gave the star early literacy because we're having conversations more about how can we focus our instruction on how our kids are performing, not so much of the numbers itself, but it's helping us target specific needs. So you'll see with reading at or above or on watch, we're still at 56% for elementaries that are still above that 50th percentile. But then we've got 44% of, 44% of our students that are still in that intervention, urgent intervention. So it's also helping build just some more conversations within our buildings, what that intervention is gonna look like. Baker, you'll see theirs for reading and math, again, for at or above or on watch, which are our bubble kids, as I call them. Sometimes there are students that, you know, were right on the line. They can either, you know, we've gotta push them up into that at benchmark or above, or they can go below into that intervention. So they're still at 67% in reading, and then for math combined, they're at 69%. For RDC, reading and math, same thing. So they're very similar, 59%, therefore 60% in math. You're going to see we are scoring higher in math than we are reading across the district. And, you know, just reflecting on that and thinking about it and the product of the pandemic, you know, teaching reading is very hard to do virtually. And so I think that's something that, you know, we're seeing that. As we look at these scores and how our kids are performing, honestly, they are doing incredibly well. When I look at each individual separate grade level, three through, three through 12 is really doing well. It's our primary, it's our K1 and 2 that we're seeing those gaps. Now, they're making growth and they're doing well. But you know, our second graders, you have to think, they are products of the pandemic. You know, I mean, they were kindergarten, March, you know, of the pandemic. So they missed that first grade, that critical year of learning to read. So second and, first and second grade are definitely areas that we're really gonna focus on to help close that gap. Okay? You'll see at GRC, same thing again, so 36.8 in reading for above benchmark, 21% urgent intervention, and then math, again, they're scoring really well. They've got 80% and then only 20% intervention or urgent intervention in math.
57 is really, or 58 is really low for reading?
Yeah.
Do what?
What's their game plan at GRC?
I know, working with them and talking, having conversations, they are really utilizing that flight time and being strategic as far as identifying specific kids, talking about interventions that are needed. I know Ms. Fithin is working with them quite a bit in having conversations within those PLCs and being more, I wanna say, I guess, that laser-like, that sense of urgency, looking at data and what does that look like. I think the way our PLC processes is they're giving those assessments and they're talking about how they're performing. But I think that alignment to the standards and really thinking about how we're teaching it, how are the kids performing on that? What do we do when they do go to flight time? Are we collaborating with teachers? What intervention are they getting within that time? So I do think all of those things are kind of coming into play and we're having those conversations. So it really helps having two sets of data now, because we've got our fall and our winter data, to really go in and work with their building leaders on that.
And actually, after their first set, which, again, you're kind of not wanting to do a knee-jerk reaction, but seeing some of those trends in that first set of data, Mr. Keen has actually already made some staffing changes on how they're, how they're more purposefully using a staff member to help direct some of that flight time to provide some supports too. So he probably only had about two or three weeks, Ms. Fithin under his belt with that. So they'll be talking about that too in some of those PLC, that PLC time. I know Ms. Conson doesn't know, but that's where like all the English department would get together, the grade-level English department, and then they would like name and claim their students on what the intervention would, which would help not just send these kids, these kids, and these kids to that flight time, but like we know which flight time is gonna be addressing possibly certain skills. So they're trying to recalibrate, recalibrate that.
And that, so for that information, that data, that is nine through 12, correct? Everyone is taking it.
Yes. And one thing that Ms. Fithin just brought up is that this is a tool that we've never had before as far as testing K to 12. So really looking at this data and thinking about it.
We've not had that progress monitoring tool that we can track a student from kindergarten up through 12th grade, whereas MAP used to stop at ninth. We're now being able to provide and have this status that we can better track the students, better identify them and target their needs.
The last one, and then I'm gonna let, I'm gonna turn it over to her, is Phoenix. And I wanted to point out a few things about our Phoenix Academy. Reading, I know Mr. Shinaki, our other instructional specialist, he was gonna be here tonight, and he has a sick baby at home. So he's really working on our Phoenix Academy with literacy. And so looking at their STAR reading data, our Phoenix Academy went from a 4.2 grade equivalency, fourth grade, to a 6.1. So they've grown, they've, you know, within a two-year timeframe, our data has shown that they're growing. And that's just specifically putting books in hands. I think there's a lot of strategies in place where they're building that love for reading with those students and talking with them. So I know he's working and doing a lot of professional development with the teachers, working with students, going in and collaborating. So that's really been a positive thing to see.
Okay, as Julie had mentioned, our progress monitoring tool is our STAR reporting system. But we also have another assessment system into play this year, and that's our case assessments. And that is an instructional tool for teachers to use. It does follow our pacing guides, and it's an instructional tool to dissect mastery of standards. So once, and we're actually in that second window right now. So once teachers administer this assessment, within 72 hours of the window closing, they have direct feedback on how their students mastered a certain standard that they have covered. And again, this is in alignment with each class pacing guide. So it is supposed to be what the teachers have already taught, so they can go back and have this assessment to see whether or not students have mastered that content and then make adjustments accordingly and planned subsequent instruction based on those assessments. We have launched a new curriculum website this year, very recently. And it houses a cardinal classroom. This cardinal classroom is created to leverage aligned systems of supports for our teachers. It's a digital resource where we house math, reading, science, and social studies tools. It houses our pacing guides and the just additional resources for our teachers and just that go-to instructional tool online, online resource. So the next slide is just that, a glimpse into the cardinal classroom of some math resources. Also on our website, we have some professional learning opportunities that is offered by CKEC. They host a multitude of opportunities throughout the year, 24/7. So we wanna make sure we're getting those in the hands of teachers. They know how to register for those, so we're also launching those on the website and promoting those for our teachers. And then finally, we are in the works of working on a Cardinal Connections Academy, and that will be Clark County's own professional development academy that we are working on to host this summer. We are in the process of gathering the needs of our teachers and our building administrators so we can figure out what sessions we need to offer and start building the components of our academy so that we can offer it several times throughout the summer to meet the needs of all of our teachers and build our curriculum department and leverage our tier-one instruction. And that's it. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you very much. Five, A's, Power Schools, Dr. Parrish, Board Superintendent goals, 1, 2, 7, 8, 9, and 10.
That was a fun little segue because what I'm presenting encompasses pretty much the whole district. So HR, finance, and academics, they may wanna chime in at some point, but this is a program or a platform that's gonna house everything for all departments across the district. So if you have it in hand, I'm gonna kind of go down and give you like a really quick summary of each piece that we're looking at. Currently, we already have a contract, I won't for you to pull it up, but we currently have a contract right now for applicant tracking with Power Schools, so that's not anything new to us. It's where internal and external applicants can come in and apply. They can upload documents, review, track their information, it stays there. So if they wanna transfer later on or apply for new positions, it's already there as well. It allows managers to schedule and sort interviews, who they wanna interview, recommend to hire. That comes into me as well. The second one, unified talent records. This would be new for us, but it's gonna focus on like the employee lifecycle, the onboarding process, W2s, things that we have them upload once they're hired. It's gonna be completely paper-free and audit-ready. So any of our audits that we go through, we can click and print, and everything's there for us. So getting rid of paper is a huge part for that second one. The third one, that's School Spring Job Board. It's nationwide. It's an educational recruiting board that helps us to hire teachers, administrators, support staff. We can post jobs on the website, search for candidates using the website's tool who already goes through and vets a lot of the applicants for us. So that'll be nice. We've never had a national job board before. Number four, unified talent, PERFORM, this is the academic piece.
Dr. Parrish, can you make sure that we're on the right thing also there, please?
Okay, so I'm just gonna go down the list for each one, and I'm just going right in order. So right now, I'm on PERFORM. So, yep. So the fourth one. So PERFORM is the academic piece. And right now, we're doing 20, 30, 40 pages of evaluations, paper evaluations. So that would go away because you could do an informal walkthrough observation or you could do a semitive observation, and it's all gonna be housed online. You can click and print, so we can print them off, sign them, and store them, store in paper form. But it'll save the principals a lot because we've talked about doing a district-aligned tool with the Danielson Framework, so we can customize it, but it also comes preloaded with the Danielson Framework that we can use. So it's completely up to Clark County Public Schools how we wanna run that.
And may I say something about, because the evaluation, you know, we don't have an evaluation, well, we have an evaluation tool, but we don't have it online yet. The other nice part about it is that the analytics, is that the, you know, whether it's the academic suite or Dr. Parrish or myself, you can go in and look like a dashboard so that you can track how evaluations are going. And it's not to like police what principals are doing, but it's to help them have support, like to make sure that they're in the right flow with their teachers, if there's something that they're struggling with, that you can go in and have a conversation with them about it. So it's just a, it's a nice way to be able to do that remotely and to also have data when you go to your principal's meetings. You know, like if it's October, where should we be at in our evaluation cycle? To make sure that we're all about waiting, like you want, you want the evaluation process to be authentic and organic and useful. You don't want it to be a compliance checklist, like we're just doing this because we've gotta get it done. So you wanna, we wanna make sure that that's a really powerful tool that helps our teachers grow. Like I wanna, I wanna know more about myself, and I know that our teachers do too, and I think our principals do a really good job with that. But this tool will help the academic suite and our, you know, our whole team to be able to help track that for principals.
That was probably the most impressive presentation that we received from Power Schools. That kind of sealed the deal for the academic department, is the analytics piece. You could group teachers by domains 1A, and then you could schedule like their cardinal connection that they're getting ready to with their academy. You could schedule that group of teachers in your building, or the superintendent could schedule a group of teachers from the whole district. So really, just the analytics. So really, just the analytics themselves were impressive and the feedback that was available for teachers and supervisors, that was a big selling point for Perform. Okay, so Perform ties into number five, which is professional learning. So this would be like the required state professional learning that we have to do to stay in compliance, but it's also going to be replacing Vector, which provides Safe Schools for us right now. So you'll see the next one says Safe Schools Implementation. So we're gonna take all of our mandatory trainings that we have to do for the state and it'll be implemented into this professional learning piece, the Unified Talent piece. So we won't have Safe Schools anymore. So we'll drop that contract and pick this up. So number seven, this is the Talent HR and Finance Solution, that HRMS Manager Portal. This is the tracking system for workflows. So right now, when she was talking about the paper pieces, so like I might touch a piece of paper, well, first the principals touch the piece of paper and then it comes to HR. HR touches the paper, then it goes to an assistant, and then it goes to benefits, and then it goes to finance, and then finance comes back to HR. So there's tons of paper going around, so there's so much loss in efficiency and it just allows so much for human error, it makes things so much slower for onboarding new employees. Well, from now, if we go with this, this manager's portal will allow the principal to make the recommendation to hire. That'll come through applicant tracking. It'll go straight into here where then, once we get the employee uploaded, all of their records are housed here. So no more folders of piles and piles of records because you'll also have the evaluation now digitally housed. It'll come into the manager's portal as well, so the employee can access all of their records. Everything will be housed there for, if they have a name change address form, to get their W2s. This company will also update our W2s for us. It'll track certifications. It'll send an email and say, hey, your certificate's expiring in 30 days, 60 days, 90 days. It'll continue to remind them. It'll send whoever is involved in the workflow, it'll send them a reminder email, hey, this person hasn't uploaded a voided check yet for the finance department, so we don't know where to send their direct deposit. It'll do all of that for us. And it archives it. So it'll, anything that the employee changes, it doesn't get rid of it, it stays on an Amazon web-based service. So it's backed up over and over and archived forever. I call this the marriage because, you know, once it goes there, it never goes away. So it's our, that's the manager portal. I feel like that's the piece that's going to bring all of Power Schools together. Smart Find Express is what we use now, Frontline and Aesop, so it does the automatic calling for subs. So we would switch over from Frontline, our current contract that we have with Frontline and Aesop would switch over to Smart Find Express. And it would do, it'll also do district data collections for us to help us with absenteeism and accruals. And it works well with PSST, which I know is a big part of finance. So they do communicate well with each other for accrual. Down to number nine, I know I'm going really fast, so please stop me at any point, but Time Clock Plus is our time and attendance that we're now contracted with Frontline. So Frontline runs all time and attendance for classified employees that clock in, clock out. It tracks absence reasons, accruals for other, for all employees. So switching over to Time Clock Plus would take the place of our Frontline contract as well. 10 through 13.
What is that price that we're paying for Frontline now?
Where's my finance? Alicia?
I literally just tried my email launch. I just pushed my.
So I've tried to really be prepared to present to you all because I know this is a ton of money, but to me, the student achievement is hard to put a value on. And I really feel like the data piece of collecting for evaluations to help our teachers grow and the retention part and the recruitment part of being able to go out and find, it'll also use the Gallup survey, which we do, to quote unquote, score teachers. It'll use that data to do the recommendations to hire to the principal. So it'll sort the applicants for the principal. So it's data tracking that I don't even know how you put a value on something that's really invaluable, you know, student achievement and recruitment and retention.
So Frontline, we currently use for our time and attendance and absent management, we're paying $19.5 for those two programs.
Per year? Per year?
I'm sorry.
Per year?
Per year.
But don't we also have to pay an additional $6,500 with PSST for them to communicate?
So, yes, so we have to, it's actually $6,700. So right now we have a program with PSST that makes Frontline and units talk.
Talk. We wouldn't have to do that anymore.
Works directly with units, so we can cut that piece out.
Good, okay.
Just so we quote the overall cost, like all the programs we're going to be able to eliminate currently add up to a little bit over $43,000 that we are annually paying on. So this is a smidge more for our annual cost, but we're getting much more with the programming and is reaching out to multiple departments that is not doing that now and achieving this hopefully pretty close to paperless between departments. So I mean, it's worth it, extra cost of what we've all talked about, meaning lots because just the manpower it takes for us to do what we're doing.
And I've tried to put a number on retention and recruitment, and I've dug through some research, looking at how many thousands of dollars that it costs to replace an employee. And we've looked at about 80 sheets of paper, and I know that might sound minimal now, but with our turnover rate, it's not minimal, 80 sheets of paper per onboarding per each new employee. So looking at it from that monetary perspective, I almost feel like it's a wash monetarily, the $27,000 difference when we don't have an evaluation piece that's going to be as effective and provide district data like this is going to be. So. Items 10 through 13, the hardware, maintenance, and support, that's optional, but Ms. Ellis and I kind of talked about it, we feel like we need it. Employees clocking in and out, if we don't have it, they're going to have to sit down and do like a manual sign-in on a website. So right now, they go up and they scan their badge, they clock in and clock out. So that's what the hardware piece is. The Wi-Fi piece is if you don't have an Ethernet cord, they can still clock in, clock out with their badges. That's what that, the last two are. When they say Wi-Fi add-ons, that's what that indicates. So the last four are optional. I just, for efficiency, Ms. Ellis and I just thought it would be most appropriate to add them. So that, those last four are a pretty big expense, too.
So on the total expense, the 138, is that including those last four?
It is.
Including the professional services piece.
And we got the advanced too, so we could have went with a basic package, but after doing lots of research and digging and looking into it, we're going district-wide with this. It's a non-program platform, and right now we have two. So with the non-program platform and multiple departments involved, all staff involved, we felt like the advanced, deep support and training was most appropriate.
Right.
So the reoccurring is only 60.
Yeah.
69.
69,000.
Yeah, the initial investment was an extended amount of training opportunities so that Dr. Parrish and Ms. Ellis and also Ms. Baumfield can make sure that all of that is kind of really sinking. We have good, which is why we were wanting to bring it a month earlier so that we don't have an overlap payment also with some of those other, was it Frontline?
It's Frontline. We wanted to try to get rid of those contracts before they renewed so we could start implementing in March.
Did they service any other counties in Kentucky?
Power Schools right now services four other counties. Frontline's starting to become a lot bigger in Kentucky, too. Kind of like us, we were already using pieces of Power Schools, so that's what you find more. Like nobody has really went all in yet, except for those other four counties.
And we were also using pieces of Frontline and some of these other counties were also kind of like, you know.
Same thing. Madison is who I kind of job shadowed first, and then Oldham County, they were picking and choosing parts of Frontline and parts of Power Schools. And I really dated both of them for a long time, this started. And I called dating and that's my marriage because I have vetted both programs with the help of finance and academic, to the point where I irritated both of the salespeople.
One was a difficult breakup, you know, or will be.
For him, not for us.
For him, it'd be a difficult breakup, but we are really confident in the product and the services that it's going to bring, the platform. Again, Dr. Livinggood, he will talk about the redundant office of redundancy. And so this is going to eliminate that multiple touch of paper and departments. And one piece of paper going between five and 60 different people, it's like zigzagging across central office. And a lot of districts are still like that, and you know, it really is going to just allow us to step closer to a more efficient process for our, for our whole central office and how it's going to reach out to our schools.
I like it as retention and recruitment too, because if you're looking at, you know, a new generation of teachers coming in, and we're still doing all this paper, it makes your district look very, a lack of progress or a lack of innovation. So it kind of brings us into the 21st century of, look what they, look how they operate, look how much faster and efficient they are, the processes. And it gives us an opportunity too to hire first because our process will be so much quicker.
I should have brought the HR folder, the last two weeks of HRs, something out. I mean, it was like this, two weeks sort of of HRs. I had to sit down and sign this.
And you did help us a lot by removing the superintendent's signature, so that made it more efficient, but it's still, it's just super redundant, the amount of paperwork and copies.
And the other thing to think about too, is a teacher might, you know, live close to a neighboring community, and they might think it's easier to go over there. Once they start their application process and nobody else, well, I shouldn't say nobody else, but they're still doing it that way, and they have gotten used to how easy things are for them and housing their information, how their evaluation is. I really think that might even make them change their mind about wanting to move, you know, relocate to a different district, that they would want to stay with us because we're going to make things more user-friendly for them as well.
It's a great way too for when teachers start writing their own professional growth goals. The growth goal goes into the academic perform piece. So when the principal or the superintendent or a board member walks in, you can see the teacher's professional growth plan on your laptop or iPad, and you can just start aligning those goals during your observation. And if you don't want to type, you can literally pick and click from their templates and slide them in. So just little pieces like that, to me as a teacher, that would have been invaluable instead of having to sit down and type out these separate documents and then upload them and so, lots, just little things like that. And you made me think of that when you said that.
Is the intention to do the initial project out of ESSR?
That's what I was wondering.
And then after that initial cost comes out with ESSR, then it would be budgeted?
Yeah, we'll start absorbing that in general fund.
Yeah. I spent some time on their website today. I mean, it's pretty, pretty nice.
We're not even touching what they can do. They have, like their professional growth library is incredible. There, they have this program called You Knew It, and it literally looks at everything from student data to budget data to employment retention data, and it makes all of these projections and predictions. And so I'm excited to see where we could go in the future, and I think by the time ESSR runs out, we can, we'll be able to see if, you know, getting our bang for the buck kind of thing.
And I don't think it's gonna, we're gonna see if we get there, we're gonna see how big the bang is.
Yeah, there you go.
For, for the buck.
Right.
Do you think the onboarding is going to, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you're gonna do it March?
So implementation could start in March.
Could, okay.
Yeah, well, that's our plan, is to start implementation in March if this gets approved. The plan would be to start implementing in March. We haven't designated how they're going to break it out because we have a sweet little baby about to join us. So we're going to have to be very strategic how we plan the implementation, but that's why we wanted to get started before these other contracts started renewing and we didn't have a time to implement and train.
It takes a while to roll things out.
Well, yeah, implementation is, you know, us learning and getting all the pieces set up, not even necessarily like.
So it wouldn't go live until after this year?
No, our intent would be next year.
Okay, because that was what I was thinking, oh my God, in March you're gonna start.
No, no.
Actually, this is a pretty in-depth statement of work with the proposal that's in our packet.
Okay.
Any more questions? Anybody have anything else? We need to vote on this, correct? I make a motion to approve as presented, and the Power Schools' contract and expense.
I think we might need to change that line item.
Change this, yeah. This says Power Schools.
Yeah, it doesn't have approval on it.
Okay, so I am going to make a motion to change line item 5A to approval for Power Schools' program and contract.
Say platform.
Platform. Okay, so 5A is now making a motion to change that to Power, approval of Power Schools' platform. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ashley, you on? Okay, 5-0. Motion passes. Okay. So I'm going to make a motion to approve the Power Schools' platform.
The contract?
Yeah, the contract as presented.
So Ms. McQuay, I had her vet the contract, and we are gonna have, have we got confirmation that we can do that?
Yes.
For the language in the contract, do you want to explain that?
Yeah, the contract they presented was only like a page and a half, but of course they refer you to their website with the lengthy terms and conditions. And there was only two minor things that I saw with the jurisdiction being California. If there is any need for litigation, you don't want to consent to the jurisdiction of California because obviously that would be costly and inefficient. And then the other thing was just some language on the identification, which is what we recommend with our board contracts. There is a non-appropriation clause as well, even though it's a five-year term.
Ms. McQuay, I'm sorry, there's a motion, didn't you make the motion? There's already a motion, unfortunately, we need a second.
Okay, sorry. No, you're okay.
I have a second.
Okay, that's fine. She already, you're fine.
Yeah.
But I appreciate it. So, yeah, there is a non-appropriation clause. My only two concerns was the identification clause and the jurisdiction being California, not Kentucky, but it sounds like you received verbal approval.
I got verbal approval from her and an email, but by the time she submits it to the company, she said it could take a couple of days for the company, but she said they do it all the time. It's, that's a very common request from every state that they work with.
So no issues.
No issues.
So as, after she vetted that, Dr. Parrish was able to get that back, but I just wanted to make sure that it would have the correct language in it, especially for our state.
Right, right. Thank you. And, okay, any word session, or motion?
Yeah, I'd like to request that your motion is that, it's added to your motion that it's subject to Board of Attorney's approval?
Yes, yes. Okay. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna remake this motion.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the Power Schools' contract and that it's submitted for Board Attorney's approval. So, satisfied?
Yeah, and we'll get that over to her as soon as we get it back and if we're ready. It's not what you wanted, then.
Okay, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, all opposed in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Dr. Parrish.
Thank you, I think I'm again.
You are. Number six, consider approval and first reading to additions to policy 03.2232, and Board and Superintendent Goals, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11.
Okay, so if you have this policy in front of you, if you're wanting to pull it up really quick, this is a complete new addition to this policy, so not an amendment, this is something new for us to consider, and I know it's going to take two readings, but we would like to make this addition. So on behalf of the HR Department, we'd like to add a section called Absence Accruals, and we'd like to add this to all leave policies, not just six. So it would be any type of leave the employee would take, it would have this addition to it. Currently, classified employees must take off in half-day increments. This addition to the policy would give classified staff the flexibility to request leave in hourly increments. Our goal is to increase attendance, increase employee effectiveness and engagement, improve student achievement, positively impact culture and climate as a retention and recruitment effort. Specifically this year, classified employees have been extremely important in helping to alleviate our critical sub shortage. They're stepping in and helping out and supervising students for us. As a district, we hope this continues to illuminate our efforts and dedication to staff retention and recruitment. So the new policy in front of you would read, classified employee accrual increments would be tracked to the nearest hour. Classified employees taking any leave may do so in hourly increments during the workday. Employees will be required to formally clock in and out when they are away from their assignments. So right now, if an employee has a doctor's appointment at 2:00 in the afternoon, we make them leave at 12:30. So you're losing that amount of time with your employee, your classified employee, that you could keep up to 1:30 in order to run and get an appointment taken care of. Specifically, what came to mind to me was the Transportation Department, where they're kind of split in half anyways, their schedules. This really gives them the flexibility to be able to return to work. And with a driver shortage and a bus monitor shortage, either because of COVID or just a lack of, this would really give us an opportunity to say, hey, they're going to run and take this would really give us an opportunity to say, hey, they're going to run and take that doctor's appointment at 11 when they're off anyways and come right back, instead of having to take a half a day off and miss the rest of the day of work. So to me, this is also a retention strategy because the employee looks at it like, hey, I can save my leave. So if we give them an opportunity to save their leave, we know at the end of their career, they can retire and cash those in or receive a payout, you know, over the length of their retirement. So I hope that you'll consider this addition to this policy.
Any questions?
There's another revision in the policy?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. In the front, about perfect attendance, is that for?
Oh, I must have, Ms. Eileen, I had submitted that one, I think, the month before. And we pulled it, and I bet I didn't update it. So I do have an updated copy that I made for you all.
That's something that we are hoping to work on, but we are continuing to vet that. And we're not ready to bring that before the full board, I, we apologize.
Okay.
That's me being overly passionate and excited as well.
Welcome to the crowd.
Yeah.
Welcome to the family.
But now you've got some front-loading what might be coming in the next little bit, so. For the sake of brevity, I also wanted to change a whole lot of other things, but KSBA wouldn't allow me because of the way it's stated in the statute. Because I wanted to take out like to-do morning, to-do, you know, and just say to mourn. But I had to amend those as well.
Under the number of days, you do have a partial sentence, employees having attendance each contracted month. So that will need to be, make sure that's not in there.
We're taking all of that out.
Okay, but I mean, in our copy that you've given us?
Yes, yeah, I'm going to have to revise all of that. We're not allowed to call it an attendance incentive and, so, it's more verbiage.
Yeah, so the only?
Yes.
I was wondering.
Not currently.
With frontline.
I want to take some reading of policy, but we'll start the school year with it. We just want to have your all's approval to know that we can start because it's going to take some lab work and finance to convert the day, the time, the hour increments on all of our staff.
Okay.
The labor time, get that done by the end of the year.
Yeah, and that's the only thing we're addressing on this policy change. But like Dr. Parrish said, we will have, because Ms. Ellis pointed out, but it was after we had already submitted these things. You also have not just a sick leave policy, you have an emergency leave policy, you have a personal day policy. And so you're, we're currently strapping them to a half-day on all of those as well. So we'll also be amending those and putting them in here for future readings, too. But it will be the exact consistent language so that they can do that on an hourly basis instead of a half-day basis. Ms. Nance is happy.
Yeah, now I'm happy to leave.
Hey, retention. I'm trying to retain her.
Any more questions? Just question, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading to the sick leave policy.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Constan, a second by Mr. Talby. Um, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish.
Okay, number seven, consider approval of schematic design option for the new Clark County Early Childhood Education Center, BG 21-247. And Mr. Stumpf, I don't think he, could he be with us tonight?
Yeah, no, he has, he's homesick.
So we have Mr. Brickshire from Ross Tarrant, and?
Yes, Randy Brickshire, Brian Buckner, and Remington Bard with Ross Tarrant. We're here to talk about and present schematic design for the preschool project. And just, I guess, a little clarification, we certainly want to be consistent in the way we call that. But KDE facilities basically uses preschool and early childhood development interchangeably. So we'll make sure that we're consistent in the way the project is called and consistent with what's on the BG 1 currently with all the documents. So we're here to seek some input and approval of schematic design. Flip to the next slide, please. I'm always going to start with this, with this graph that represents the timeline of the project. And basically, there are four main areas of design. And that's programming, schematic design, design development, and construction documents. We're here tonight to talk about schematic design. So that's that first blue, that cyan color that's on the screen that we're looking at. And we'll be back at each of those phases of the design process in front of the board to present those documents as they develop and seeking your all's review and approval and input on those documents. As we move forward into design development, before we move on, just stay there for a second. So schematic design, we're going to go through the site plan, the floor plan, and some schematics as far as the building's starting to take shape. And Brian's going to present some of that programming. As we move into the next phase, which is design development, we're going to continue to develop the design of the building, the design of the site. As you know, we're collecting information related to the geophysics of the site that we're looking at. And that'll be incorporated into the design. And we're also going to be good at getting into the detail of the cost estimate. And I want to touch base on that real quickly because we were back in front of you in October to present a revised BG 1 for the project that specified a certain cost for the building. And we were looking at $300 a square foot for the building as a project cost at that point in time. It probably will not come as a surprise to you as you watch the news. Building costs have continued to escalate and inflate through labor shortages, material shortages, long lead times, and so, and there's also been some projects that have bid recently in neighboring districts, Fayette County, Powell County are two examples. And those projects have come in pretty significantly over those cost estimates that have been put together for those. So I want to plant a little bit of a seed for that's going to be a future conversation because as we get into the design development, we're going to be able to do some more detailed takeoffs and really pay much more attention to where we are from a budgetary perspective. And what we're going to present tonight is we're already being conscious of that because we're looking at a footprint that's very efficient. We're looking at a site and trying to make sure that we're using that site very efficiently, maximizing that site to its, to its greatest potential. So as we move to beyond design development, we'll have construction documents. Again, we'll be back in front of you all for approval of that. And then we'll be going out to bid and then construction. So we anticipate that we'll be back in front of you in March with design development documents. And again, an updated cost, more detailed cost information for conversation. And then a few months later, probably in June, we'll be in front of you with construction documents and preparing to go out to bid for the project and anticipate that construction will start in the, in late summer. So with that, I want to turn it over to Brian.
Go ahead and flip to the next slide here. So we, you know, as we're kind of wrapping up schematic design right now and looking for approval for that, and we have a couple of options here to show you, it's important to kind of note that we didn't get here kind of alone. The first thing that we did as part of the programming phase was we established an advisory committee that had over 20 members, that included preschool, staff, educators. We had representation from both the district and also Head Start, as well as actual parents on the committee as well. And so there's quite a few people that were on our advisory committee here in the room tonight. So really, good to see all them again. We, we started off the programming phase, and for us, that really means it's a lot of information gathering. And we want to understand the really kind of strong foundation about the program, you know, how it functions, what the, you know, existing issues are at their existing facility, and kind of really getting to, to understand the program and where they kind of see themselves moving forward before we start designing the facility. So we had three programming meetings with the advisory committee, a couple of other meetings with the kind of core leadership team. We went on a couple of building tours, went to the Bluegrass, the Child Development Center of Bluegrass, as well as the YMCA Center for Children. That's a relatively new facility, so both of those are really good precedents here locally to go look at. We also did a lot of kind of national precedent facility research. And one of the things that we'll, you know, we kind of made note of is that, you know, we don't do a lot of district-wide preschool facilities in the state. And even nationally, you don't see a lot of facilities that are, that have the kind of capacity for this many students. And so, you know, we, we looked at several that are kind of in that 10 to 12 classroom range. And so we're looking at a base bid of 18 here. So we're substantially larger than, than some of the other precedents nationally. So it was really kind of important for us to kind of do a wider range scope of research of other facilities. And, you know, as well as kind of data gathering with the advisory committee. We used a series of surveys, and if you flip to the next slide, actually. Those surveys, we're able to kind of pull in data and information for responses to a lot of the questions that we formatted, both from the building standpoint and also the site performance on the building. So we have a lot of those things that we can go back and look to as we kind of make decisions in the future. So, you know, kind of when we start to see something tangible, like the kind of first iteration of floor plans, you know, there's a lot of kind of background information that led us to get to this result here. So let's go ahead and flip to the next slide. And I'll kind of go through these pretty quickly. You know, this is just, I'm sharing some of the information that we, we kind of went through when we started. And one of the things, when we talk about, you know, educational facility design, we look at the kind of core components being, you know, the primary classrooms, the primary academic space. And so really understanding that really well and how that kind of works. And that's, in a lot of ways, that's where we start to design the facility. So we kind of work from the inside out. So when we look at preschool classrooms, you know, this is an image of one of the existing classrooms here at Clark County. You know, what are the limitations of the existing spaces? How do we want to see these changed? And so kind of starting from, from that point. So if we flip to the next slide, we might zoom that out a little bit just so it shows the whole thing here. There we go. These are some precedent images that we have from some other existing preschool facilities nationally that we looked at. Next slide, please. So as part of the, kind of towards the end of the programming phase, we had a series of diagrams that talked about classroom pairing and the kind of amenities for each of the classrooms. So preschool classrooms, unlike kind of regular standard classrooms at kind of higher levels of learning, they require restrooms, they require kind of storage areas. And so what we looked at is using a pair of classrooms to kind of minimize and make more efficient the use of square footage and allow some of that square footage to go back into the actual main learning environment. So we looked at doing a shared restroom, which is kind of labeled as number three here, as well as a shared storage space between two classrooms. So that allows us to have, you know, sink in each of those restrooms, two stalls for, you know, for toilet, as well as having a changing table access. So one of the, obviously, the big limitations at the existing facility is that the changing stations, we're all in kind of gang restrooms in the public access corridor. So having this kind of right between two classrooms works out really well. Let's go to the next slide. So that starts to look, we, we take that diagram and then we start to actually put that into our, you know, the architectural model, this is what, how that starts to kind of shape up. So we're taking kind of direct cues from the programming, diagramming, and moving into this kind of iteration for floor plan development. So that's kind of how you see this start to shape up. So you start to see the restroom facilities here. We have sinks in the classrooms as well as additional storage capacity, wall cabinets, things like that. And then we're kind of making sure that these classrooms are, are sized appropriately, not just for KDE, but also for Head Start, where we're doing kind of a hybrid program here. So each classroom, roughly, if you include their, their share of the storage areas, we're looking at right around 900 square feet. So that was a little bit of a bump. I know you all have the programming documents. So we, we noted a few things that we were over the KDE model program, that's one of them. But it was important in order to maintain the hybrid nature of the program here moving forward with all the classrooms. So let's go to the next slide. So taking that classroom pairing, we moved into the next component. And one of the things that we talked about, again, back to the scale of the building, being a big preschool center. This is the first school that a lot of these kids are going to go to. We're talking about three, four, you know, in some cases, five-year-old students that are coming into a big building for the first time. And so, you know, mitigating that kind of fear, moving forward into a large facility and trying to reduce some of the intimidation that occurs with that. We looked at a, an option where we actually created a series of small learning communities. And so with 18 classrooms being the base bid for this, we felt that it was a, a good decision to kind of break these up into six classroom components. One of the other things that we've seen, both at higher levels of learning and also other preschool precedents nationally, is, is kind of arranging these classrooms around a shared use space. And so when we talk, they mentioned social emotional learning earlier, but we talk about those types of interactions with students at this age level and also even project-based learning and things like that, they're starting to do at a really young age. To prepare them to get into kindergarten, it's really, really crucial to have these kind of breakout areas where you have flex space. So we kind of look at this as kind of a neighborhood living room space for these classrooms and have areas for kind of smaller-scale gross motor skills, you know, activity space where they can do art activities in larger groups and they have more space to kind of spread out. It also helps to kind of compartmentalize the building as well, so both from a school safety standpoint, but also just to kind of reduce the overall sense of scale for these students at this young age. So you've gone from the kind of single classroom component, now we're kind of see what we look, what we're looking at when we talk about the small learning community. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. So with that kind of core part being developed first, we started to look at a couple of iterations for bringing in all of the shared space and all of the other, you know, circulation, everything else that we need for a building of this size. So let's skip to the next slide. So what you'll see here on the bottom right is what we're considering option one. And so option one is, you know, if we kind of had everything that we wanted, the full square foot build out, and we're, we're talking about just nudging under the gross allowable area that KDE would, would allow us to build. This is kind of what we're looking at. It's, it's about 45,600 square feet, gross square feet. One of the things that you'll notice, we, we looked at placing these small learning communities in such a way that they had equitable access to all the shared spaces within the building. And so we had, before we get to the specifics of this, we actually had several other iterations of floor plans that we looked at and reviewed. And some of the negatives that we kind of heard come back were just kind of distance of travel. And some of the things that we talked about in programming, about transition times and those transitions for that student in that age range can get kind of lengthy. And even in the existing building, you know, we measured it out, it's 300 feet from the most remote classroom to the media center at that facility. So that's the kind of longest travel distance. So our idea was that we were to start with these, you know, these parameters and try to cut that as much as we could. So when we look at this particular scheme that was selected out of, out of a group of four to further develop, we, we had, we really kind of cut those, those travel distance times down, going to the multipurpose space, going to the media center, going to the resource rooms, and kind of banking a lot of those core shared spaces in a way that had really good kind of equal access for all of the classrooms. So one of the other things that you'll notice with, with that first option is that we have a cafeteria and a multipurpose kind of gym gross motor skill space. So one of the things that we looked at very, you know, very early on was that we, KDE model program does not have a cafeteria as part of their model program. It's something we've kind of talked about quite a bit. And as such, we kind of almost maxed out, I mean, we were very close to maxing out the square footage allowable, allowable that they would even let us build. So that was one of the things that we looked at very early on. And when we, we looked at a second option that kind of constrained and brought back some of those square foot numbers, we eliminated the cafeteria as part of that. And I know that, that is, that is tough in some ways, but I think it's something that we can do. I think there are some ways that we can work around having a, a multipurpose space and make that an effective, you know, area, both for kind of gross motor usage and having built-in components, and also serving, if, if needed, as a cafeteria or as a, an after-hours community space. We can also have conversations about, you know, family-style dining in the classrooms and things like that to help, help with that. So before we get into the second option, on option one, the site plan. So this is a, this is kind of the, the basic survey that we received of the site. The site is behind Strode Station. So if you look at the very north end of that image, you'll see Martin Luther King. At the very south, you'll see Frontier Drive. So what you're seeing in this particular image is, again, is the first option of the building. So it's the largest footprint and how that fits on the site. A few things to make note of, we have the kind of pink shaded regions on the site are areas of concern. So we have, we know that there are several sinkholes on the site. The one on the bottom left, we think daylight, or daylight's watered out onto a feature that's on the adjoining property to the plan northwest. The one on the right-hand side, the largest of, of the three features, has a sinkhole that's on the very north side of that. And we believe that that has water moving from that sinkhole out through the feature on the very north end of the property. That's something that is going to be confirmed through the geotechnical, the geophysical report for this project. They're going to do dye testing for that. So we think that that's what's happening there. And so what we decided kind of early on is that we're going to try to place the building, obviously, outside of those features, on an area that was going to be most cost-efficient to build on. It's less, has less kind of topographical change over the course and then kind of relegating the rest of the site for parking and things like that. So when we look at where the building ends up getting sited, that was, those are the kind of primary concerns that we looked at. So let's go to the next slide here. So the second option, so option two is the option that we removed the cafeteria from the scope of the floor plan here. This brought our square footage down much closer to the kind of core gross square foot for the KDE model program. And also carved out, you know, 2,000 square feet out of the program, or over 2,000 square feet out of the program, which obviously has a significant budget impact as well. One of the things that I really like about where this is heading, you know, there, A, the, a little bit more of a compact floor plan, you'll see it in the site plan, there's some really good positives for that. We also think that the way that this is kind of shaping up, we have two really good areas for outdoor play areas that can kind of be separated and have easy access off of the classroom, small learning communities. Right now, we know that there's a big issue with kind of traversing across an access drive to get to the playground, and that's not something that we want to do. So when we, we, some of the, the big positives for us is that are how they, we are creating multiple different use spaces here, both for passive and active play with the students. We've moved, in this particular case, we moved the gang restroom. We've moved, in this particular case, we moved the gang restroom, storage room, and a laundry room that were down closer to the cafeteria up towards the north of the multipurpose room. We increased the square footage of the multipurpose room back to 5,000 for the KDE model program. So, one of the things that we can look at is how we might be able to split that space with a, a partition or something that can be used for both, you know, both kind of gross motor skills as well as kind of cafeteria functions, if that, if that ends up becoming a need at some point. The cafeteria, mechanical, custodial receiving, those kind of back-of-house spaces are down towards the plan south in this image here. You'll also note that there's an alternate for additional classrooms and an additional small learning community to take this up to a 450-student facility. One of the other things that we changed in this particular iteration is that on the, the classroom groupings on the left, we changed how the kind of communal kind of living room space worked and allows that to have a direct access to the outside for potential addition of future classrooms. So, let's actually go ahead and jump to the, actually, no. When we look at that, if they do the 450 build-out in the future and then feel like there is a need, when we talk about universal preschool, things like that, to increase the size of that, this is a really good setup for kind of having that happen in the future. Additionally, we will need to have a storm shelter as part of this project. So, one of the things that, you know, with this being a new educational facility, the, the latest iteration of the IBC, the International Building Code, Kentucky adopted the storm shelter language. So, we've done several of these already, but this facility will have one. The small learning community kind of concept works really well because it affords us the size of this, of the storm shelter. And it also allows us to do that with kind of smaller distance runs between bearing points. So, when you look at like a gym space, for instance, it's big and it can house those students, but it's really, really expensive to do that on long-span structures. So, we're doing that from a really cost-efficient standpoint. Plus, those students don't have to go anywhere if there's an emergency. So, we're only talking about two other groupings having to move there. So, let's go to the next slide. So, the site plan here, we actually did a kind of colored-up slide because it's a little easier to read. But you can start to see we've infilled some of the active and passive play areas for the facility. We've colored the drive, access drives here. And so, this scheme is a little bit different than the other because with the smaller footprint, we were able to move the building footprint down towards the southeast a little bit more. So, we're actually getting it off of some of the more challenging topography, getting it back onto a, a flatter area, less change in, in topo. And that's really good, I'm just from a, you know, cost-efficiency standpoint in terms of site development. We have a really good access, both for the service vehicles as well as kind of enhanced parking for teachers and staff. We have 85 spaces right now for teachers and staff, as well as, I think we're showing 13 spaces right now for visitors up on the plan north. So, as, as vehicles kind of come in either from MLK or from Frontier Drive, those, those traffic, that traffic will split between bus and parent drop-off traffic, so per KDE. So, we'll have the bus loop will kind of go towards the, the plan south there, kind of in the middle. And then, parent drop-off will go up to the north. So, they have a lot of, a lot of additional space for kind of parent queuing. We know that's an issue right now in Beckner Street. Obviously, there's not much room to, to do that and to really kind of house the amount of buses that they have coming, coming in at, at a single clip. So, I think this works really well for the use of the facility, for the use of the space and the site that we have here. And I'm, you know, totally open for any kind of additional questions about this site, but we'll kind of skip ahead to the, the next couple of slides. But, let's see, go to the next one here. So, now that we're kind of towards the end of schematic design and assuming that we received schematic design approval this evening, our next step will be to start doing more refinement of the floor plan. We're going to start to look at window layouts, we're going to start to look at the structural system, the MEP system for the building. We're going to start to look at what the building actually looks like. We're going to be designing the elevations, we're going to look at materials, all of those kind of things, furnishings, furnishing layouts. So, this is kind of our, our first take on, you know, understanding the massing of the building. So, what does it look like volumetrically? And one of the nice things about having these shared spaces kind of in the middle of the building is that we were able to kind of pop up the, the roof and the ceiling heights on, on those spaces a little bit. We can bring in daylight from a Claire story down into the space. We're maximizing both the wall space and the media center as well as the multipurpose room and still having access to really high-quality daylight. And again, from a cost efficiency, you're kind of pulling those spaces together. So, we're having to do less kind of structural gymnastics to make that work. So, again, this is kind of a graphic to help kind of understand what that building is going to start to look like a little bit more, instead of just kind of reading on a, on a floor plan level. And then, this is our, just the final slide, just talked about kind of getting into design development after this, assuming that, that we receive approval. But, again, we're really excited. This is a great project. Just, we, we don't see a lot of these, as I mentioned before. And, you know, I've got kids that are in preschool and it's, it's a fun one. I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do differently here than you would see in a high school, for instance. So, it's been, it's been really exciting to work on this so far.
So, we went through that relatively quickly. So, any questions, comments, things that we can answer? And again, if, if the board approves schematic design tonight, we will be submitting to Kentucky Department of Education, Facilities Management, following, immediately following. We'll probably actually have a sit-down review meeting with them to go through this. We've already had lots of conversations with them about the programming document. Again, because it's a unique facility. And then, we'll be moving into design development and hope to be back in front of you in March to present continued further development of the, of the plans. And as Brian mentioned, we'll be getting into the building elevations and aesthetics of what it actually looks like, along with cost.
So, is, is the first option included for 350 students and the second one? Or, I mean, the first ones were 450, the second one's 350?
No, they're, they're actually both for 350 base, they, they both got 18 classrooms. The biggest difference is the second option does not have that separate space for the cafeteria. Option one has both a multipurpose room and a cafeteria, it's two distinct separate spaces. Option two is combining that function into a single space. It's, it's a bit larger in the option two than the, the first option as an individual space, but it's more efficient. We're saving 2,000 or 3,000 square feet by doing that.
So, the alternative, alternative section there on the bottom left, that would be for the additional 100 students?
That's correct, to get the 450.
Yeah, base, everything is colored there is for 350, that's 18 classrooms. The, the left-hand, lower-left is an additional learning community. That's additional 100 students to get us to 450. And as Brian mentioned, one of the kind of the great things that came out of some conversations with the district is setting ourselves up for some really easy future additions going out to the west off of those two classroom wings that could continue to increase the capacity of this facility.
And I failed to mention earlier when I looked at this, when we were looking at the site plan for option two, but moving that away from that, that property boundary allows more room for growth out to the plan west and it also allows for a larger kind of active play area in, in that space as well, just to kind of keep that in mind. One of the other things too, when we look at this particular scheme, we were able to both trim back, you know, not only the cafeteria square footage that was around 2,900 square feet, we also cut back some of the corridor space when we kind of redesigned how the entry to the multipurpose space works. So, we're kind of cutting out some of that gross square footage as part of it. So, it, it's much more efficient in terms of its, its layout and its use of space.
So, I'm sorry, the difference between option one and option two is how many square feet? Forty-five to forty-two?
Forty-five to forty-two.
Any more questions, discussion?
Do we need to give them a little bit more context about the change, projected change in cost from option one to option two?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, if you're looking, I'm just going to speak in rough numbers. If you're looking at 3,000 square feet, gross square feet, and you know, you're looking at, you know, $340, $350 a square foot for construction. Probably need to do that math on a calculator as it goes.
It's about an extra million dollars if it's 2646, the difference in square feet at 350 a square foot?
Yes. Are you doing that math?
Nine hundred twenty-six thousand.
Now, a million dollars.
And that is in addition to what was, the project cost was at $300 back in October. So, just making sure that we, because our BG was 13,7 originally.
Our, our current BG one is 13,670,000 as a total project cost. And that's at $300 a square foot, which we had, we had up that in October. And that was even higher than what KD was recommending at the time. I think they're at 262 or something like that for an elementary school, which we were kind of benchmarking against. But, you know, recent, recent bids in some neighboring districts have been higher than that. And, you know, the, it's difficult to forecast, you know, a month from now, let alone six months from now, what the construction market might be. But it's, you know, we anticipate that it's going to be at similar conditions to what it is today.
It's really option two is the best, that's what you're recommending.
That's what I would recommend because we are already over what the initial estimate was. Then that went to your BG, which was in excess of the original estimate. And now, we are from 300 to 340 on a construction cost. And then, our project cost is going to be more so than that. So, as a former Head Start preschool principal, and Dr. Davies and I share this passion, I would love to, for us to build option one. However, we are going to be beyond our bonding potential. And so, then we're going to have to have other decisions that we're going to have to talk about with our contingency fund. And so, what we decide now is going to cause us to make decisions upon that later.
My other comment would be that we're designing based bid for 350. We've got this alternate. Now, that alternate is not in that 13,670.
Right.
That is a separate number. So, you know, I think you put yourself in a better situation if you need to, or we get really great bids, really good bids, they're within a budget and, you know, that puts you in a better position to be able to accept that alternate to build additional classroom, which I understand potentially your, you know, the enrollment's at 310 currently or somewhere thereabout. So, you know, day one, you could, you could literally build this preschool with 350 students.
So, option two gives us the opportunity to go ahead and possibly plan for that, that extra four? Or is it two classrooms?
It's five classrooms and an alternate.
Five classrooms to the research.
Hundred students, 20 students per classroom and a research room, correct?
So, my recommendation to the board would be option two.
Any other discussion? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt option two. To approve the schematic design, option two for Clark County. I don't know what the preschool or the childhood is, however, we amend that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure it has the same language.
Okay, I'll second that. Any additional discussion?
I hate giving up the cafeteria.
Me too.
As a principal of the cafagematorium?
Do we want to have more discussion on this?
I mean, it's money, it's, it's what it is, but...
Do you mind going back and letting them see option one on that again?
Can you all go back probably to the option one floor plan and get three slides?
And again, excuse me, if I can approach this, but option one.
Doesn't fit on the...
No, this is option one. It, it does fit on the site, but it has the cafeteria here and it has an extended corridor on this side. And so, what you'll see in option two, it also has similar classrooms as far as these learning areas, learning commons that kind of turn in on themselves. So, option two, biggest difference is that that cafeteria is not there. So, we've increased the size of the multipurpose room and pulled that down so that it can be used off of the cafeteria and also as a multipurpose room by pulling this bank of spaces up to a more central location. And then, you'll see it in the graphic here, we've actually changed that so that this corridor has got pulled up to make the base bid more efficient. And this class, this, this corridor would be extended in the classroom building or in the alternate.
How big is that multi, that, that green area?
The green space is 5,000 square.
In option one, it's 4,300, in option two, it's 5,000. So, when we pulled out that cafeteria square footage, we bumped that back to the KDE model program for that to be 5,000. We had to do a little bit of gymnastics to try to get the cafeteria in there to begin with, with the KDE model program. So, we, we kind of, between the Head Start size for the classrooms and the cafeteria, we were, we were over the gross allowable for the building. So, we, we cut some of the spaces down slightly in order to get the full size in there. But when we removed the cafeteria, we bumped back some of that square footage in the multipurpose with the intention that if we talked about having an operable panel partition or something that could split that space off to be able to use it on like an inclement weather day, for instance, to have gross large skills and cafeteria function at the same time, you know, we could look to do that.
Oh, I hate partitions.
And can you go back to option two, please?
Going back to the Providence days.
How much additional square feet is the alternate?
It's just under 5,000 square feet, so I think it's like 40, 4,800.
So, option one, without being able to build the alternate now, is projected just at construction cost at 340. So, we haven't even got to the increase that will happen at projection, at project cost, would be 15,500 without the extra classrooms, just 350. If you went with option two, and I will support however you all vote, again, I would love to say yes to have both. I'm just wanting to make sure that we have the right context. Would be 16,300 for option two, if you went ahead and approved the alternate. Again, the BG was originally 13,700. So, if we get, Mr. Birkshire and I got to speak today, if we go over 10%, we're going to have to end up doing an, you know, an increase or we're going to have to change or resubmit a BG one anyway. But that's, that's kind of how I'm looking at it. Is if you go with option one, you're at 15,500 for 350 kids. If you go with option two, it's going to be less than the 15,500 to initially build. But if you want to be able to have that alternate for those additional 100 students, you're looking at 16,300. And that's still at the construction cost. So, then there's going to be an increase beyond those numbers when we get to, is that correct? To the project cost. And our bonding, you know, needs to be considered in that decision and then how it impacts our contingency.
Well, I'd rather be able to service more children by having that alternate classroom addition than having a separate gym and cafeteria.
And we do have Dr. Davies here, if you all would like to ask her any questions. Do you want to come up, Dr. Davies, just to kind of go through?
I'd love your opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as the cafeteria and...
So, really, best practice for early childhood dining is family-style dining. It's very different when you think about elementary school, having that gym, a cafeteria. And we have to do, use the cafeteria at the preschool because our classrooms aren't really built to handle family-style dining within the classrooms. Whereas, these classrooms would have sinks, toileting. So, it would really be much more family-style for the kids to be able to sit together and eat together. Actually, every early childhood facility we visited, I never saw a cafeteria. They all eat within the classroom. It's much less transition time, which maximizes instructional time. And they're served in family-style, like in bowls where they can serve themselves, which also helps that sort of food scarcity thing. Because if you're, you get to serve you how much you would like, right? You can have more if you want more. So, I, as much as I'd love to build 450 and the cafeteria so that I could maybe do, you know, whatever might pop into our mind, I really do think that small community weakens, because I was thinking, well, we use it for graduation and we use it for Christmas performances and that sort of thing currently. But we can use those small learning community areas for smaller, more intimate performances. And then, we can use the multipurpose space or the media center for those types of things. So, I think as long as we think creatively, I think the focus is on meeting the needs and serving more children rather than getting confined to the idea of what we have today. That's my two cents.
And that's a good point about the media center too. You know, we were, we didn't really touch on that so much today. But, you know, as we get into design development, we will start to talk about how does that space get outfitted? And one of the things that we see kind of across the board is there's more of a, a push against the kind of traditional, you know, bunch of series of bookshelves kind of inhabiting that space and it's much more of a flex, kind of hybrid use space. And so, I think certainly at the preschool level, we would see something that would look very different than what we would consider to be a traditional library media center. So, having that as an additional flex space, I think, would, again, would support after-hours activities and kind of community function and interface with the facility.
We're still going to have a state-of-the-art phenomenal kitchen space where we can prepare food for students and families.
So, you are planning on eating within the classrooms?
That is what this option two model would, would include.
And that's kind of the standard.
It is.
For early childhood, yes.
And that is more in line, more so with the federal Head Start program than it is even the state preschool. even a state preschool. Because, you know, you think about, you go to kindergarten, they're not measuring heights of seat stools on the cafeteria table. But since you're in from preschool, they're measuring the height of your seat. So like you have all of that ready. Head Start is more in that, you know, how do you do gross motor or fine motor when it's just embedded naturally? Well, family style dining is a way to, you know, also improve the fine motor skills because they are getting to do more things than just possibly open their own milk. So they do have a lot of flexibility. Dr. Davies and I have gone back and forth, challenged each other on how can you use this, what's this best for? And just, I don't want to say arm wrestle, but you know, we really did have some good productive conversations. And these two gentlemen, and Mr. Remington back there have been very patient with us because we are very passionate about this project. And we just, again, want to see as many students served in our community as possible. Thank you very much.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have enough information to vote? And the motion's to approve option two for the schematic design for the new Clark County Early Childhood Education Center or preschool. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number eight, consider approval of pay application, number fifteen twenty-five dash oh five, Dirac's Iran Architects for the Clark County Preschool Center Construction Project BG two one dash two four seven, and the amount is twenty-three thousand thirty dollars and seventy-three cents.
I make a motion.
And I did have a question from one board member, which I'll follow it up with Mr. Brickshire, that if for some reason the strode property, we were concerned about the sinkholes on there, if the topograph or not, I'm sorry, we already had, it's the geophysical survey that we're waiting on. If anything comes back with that and it forces us to relook at our site, then this would be prorated and applied to that new process again. So just want to make sure that I did get that information to everybody.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, excuse me.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number nine, consider approval of resolution approving an amendment to the interlocal agreement creating the Bluegrass and Central Kentucky Unified Police Protection System, backups and authorizing, excuse me, the superintendent and chief of Clark County Schools, Division of Law Enforcement to sign all relevant documents. Chief Mulligan?
Just want to say thank you guys for listening to me. Basically, this is a, it's a system, it's a backup system. It gives us an opportunity that we haven't had before. Our arrest powers just consist of school properties. And when we go out and do home visits with the counselors and stuff like that, we have no arrest powers whatsoever. You know, if something happens, we can just act upon it as a civilian, not as, under the color of our badge and stuff. So what this does is, it's an agreement basically saying that we can go right into Clark County and something happens, we can act on and use our arrest powers to stop whatever happens if it happens to be to the counselor, if it happens to be to us or the children or anything like that. It's a, we're not, we're not asking to, we're not going to be out making traffic stops. We're not going to be, you know, doing anything like that because our job is to take care of Clark County schools, not outside of the public realm. That's why we're doing this basically, so we can take care of the people we protect while we're amongst our borders, basically. So if you got any real questions about it, I've got Sheriff Purdue with me, but that can, he's on the board of it. It's not going to cost the school system anything whatsoever. It just gives us another tool to protect ourselves and the people we serve. That's what it is.
And Chief Mulligan has been pulling all of his resource officers in monthly, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And Sheriff Purdue has been invited to those on several occasions. And so this actually came about from him allowing the resource officers just to talk about problems that they saw. And as a result of that, does he and Sheriff Purdue work together to realize that we really do need to expand our authority?
So is this just part of our internal policy or a policy with?
It's a policy, we have to abide by their policy, the backups policy. You're saying, yes, you're giving us the authority, say, yeah, we will abide by what they say. Because what it is, they just want to govern us. They don't want, they really don't want us going out and making traffic stops and going to other counties and making arrests and stuff like that. They don't want us to do that because the biggest thing is if we go out and say like something happened at a house and I stop it, well, they already know that I'm there because I have to report it to them. Like if we go out somewhere, I call dispatch and say, hey, we'll be out on Buckner Street or something for a family welfare check or something for a child. And if something happens and we do act upon it, then the Winchester police will come, will call their assistance and they're, we're in their jurisdiction, basically, and they will become, we will go by their rules and stuff like that. And they'll probably take over, basically. All we're doing is just stopping something under the letter of the law and then line the jurisdiction, police, whoever were that to take over at that time. And also like, for instance, like the parade we did. The Winchester police didn't have enough officers to cover it, so I used my resource officers or SLEOs to help with the traffic and stuff, which it'd be like you standing out there. You know, we had, if someone ran us, there's nothing we can do. But if we're standing out there as police officers and they run through the parade and stuff, we can act upon it because we were working with joint with the Winchester police or with the Sheriff's Department on protecting the kids and stuff in the parade, things like that. You know, instead of just being a witness, basically.
That's a good example.
Because if they come through, we'd just be a witness. We couldn't act upon it. But if something happened and somebody did reckless drive through or something, we could act upon it. But that's not what we're looking to do. We're just looking to do, to take care of our people. That's what, they're not going to, like the city or the county, they're not going to call us to go out and work bus wrecks or anything like that. That's not part of, they can't, it's not designed for them to give us calls. You know, now, say like, if there's a accident, we can stop and help until they get there. Say like, because I would do it anyways, to be honest with you. If I was going from school to school and there was an accident, even though I didn't have no jurisdiction, I would turn my lights on, get out and help the people. Because, I mean, I've been a policeman forty years. You know, it's just in my nature to do something like that. You know, so to me, I think this is a great option for us, you know, and I hope you all consider it. And if, like I said, if you hear anything from Sheriff Purdue, I'd be glad to have him come up here and say a word about it if you'd like. Would you like to say anything, Sheriff?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you all. Even considering this, Bourbon County, they're unique like Clark County's law enforcement. Their SLEOs also, not SRO. And they've been a backups couple of years now. It's worked out well for them. I talked with their chief, Mike Jones, who worked for Keith and them for a while. It's worked out well for them. I helped Mike in Bourbon County get into backups. Talked to him many times before we got him in. Talked to him here in the last month or so about Chief Mogan and them getting in. And he said, yeah, it's been great for us. You know, as Chief Mogan described, you go on a welfare check or whatever nature it is, child hadn't been to school for a week or so and you go check on them. If they don't have, if they're in the county and they don't have a deputy with them, they have no jurisdiction whatsoever. And we go with them anytime he calls or anyone. We go with them this way and we still will go. And that's part of backups. If they're going out, say, on Jackson Ferry to do a welfare check on a child, they have to call first and say, hey, this is where we're going. Would you like to go with us? And we'll go. And we always have and we always will. It's always better that way instead of just knowing that that's where they're at. But we'll still be doing the same thing that we've always done. It just honestly, say we're tied up on the other end of the county, you may have some information where it's a little dicey whether there's something bad or not at that location. This gives them the opportunity to go ahead and take an action until we get there. And the policy for backups, and it's pretty stringent, it's, you have to contact the jurisdictional agency, which is in the county, it's a city, it's city police. You have to contact them, get the location, what you're doing. And honestly, I've never had even, our detectives are out of county every day. And we've got, I was thinking at one time, seventy-two different agencies, counties and cities in this. There's actually ninety-four. So, and this was a law that I worked on for two years to get passed. And it's worked out well. We've had one complaint in like five, six years now, and we've worked it out in five minutes. Because it's basically a city and a county, law enforcement agency, little butting heads a little bit. Took about five minutes to work it out. You know how it goes. But that's pretty good for a bunch of cops, to be honest with you. But it's worked out well. It's a great cooperative unity thing with us. We're not going to put any more, just because they might have jurisdiction, we're not putting any more work on to the SLEOs. And actually, it'll work out better for them. Like honestly, it'll give you less liability if you're offsite and have to do something. It really is. So it works out very well for both of us. They can take action. You know, one example is right now, if you've got a school bus out in the city or out in the county, they call in, got a fight, whatever problem, they have no jurisdiction. There's nothing they can really do. They have to call us, call the city, and we have to come out and take action, really do. So, you know, it gives them authority in the whole county. And like he said, nobody goes out writing tickets and they wouldn't. But, you know, my guys, city's guys, we got like ninety-four different agencies involved. There's nobody out in a different county writing a ticket or anything. And we usually, we use it mostly for our detectives, their investigations, because, you know, the fact of the matter is, we trade our criminals with other counties and other counties trade their criminals to us. Nobody does any crime at home anymore, especially thefts. So it's worked out very well for us. We've got probably, I think, two more agencies. And I've sat on this board since the inception. And we've got two more agencies coming up this week to approve. So we'll go up to about ninety-four. Like to see, you know, Chief Mogan and his department involved and a member of backups. I think it's a win-win for everybody.
Thank you.
So like when the whole ordeal where like the whole interstate and all that got shut down, rare time, would they be able to come out and help in that kind of a situation? Either primarily for school, where school was shut off, but also know you didn't have any help because my road got shut down.
Well, we had.
Because you were stuck.
We had a lot shut down.
Exactly, but we were shut down on both ends.
Right.
I'm not going to put you to work, but I am.
But the thing is, you got to remember too, though, you got to remember the equipment we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Because our equipment wouldn't do it.
Well, they could, but quite honestly, we wouldn't ask.
Wouldn't they have the same authority as a deputy sheriff?
Kind of where I was going.
Wouldn't they have the same authority as a deputy sheriff?
Sure, which they do on school property now.
They could cross county lines as well. They can cross county lines as well. They go Fayette County, Bourbon County.
Not Fayette County. Fayette County is not part of backups because they don't want anyone else in their county.
But any county is a backup.
However, UK is part of backups. And I send guys over there and they pay them to work intersections and the stadium at football games. But, yeah, they could go, say you've got a kid that needs to be interviewed that's done a crime on your property at a ballgame or something, and he's in Bourbon County or he's in Estill County, because they're part of backups too, Powell County is. You know, they can contact the agency that has jurisdiction there, get with them and go interview them or talk to them, whatever they need to do. They could even make an arrest if they needed to, if it was an adult, eighteen or older. But at this point, they go to Estill, Powell, anywhere surrounding us, they have no jurisdiction whatsoever and they're at the mercy of whether they'll let them come over and talk or not.
But on the other hand, on what he's talking about there too, say like if it was in another county and the arrest needed to be made, it'd be up to that jurisdiction whether we handled it or they handled it. You know, it wouldn't be under our choice, it would be their choice.
Yeah, actually, in the, in the policy of backups, say Keith does a home visit, he calls us that we weren't there or we're there with him. And there's a criminal element or criminal intent or whatever at that location. In the policy, if it's out in the county, we would actually take over and do any investigation and charges. He might discover it, but we would take it over and work it.
Just have concerns of our, of our school police officers getting into a much broader law enforcement situation.
That's when, that's when you have your SOP, our standard operation procedure policies, that's when you tell, that's when you put it in there. Like when we create this, we'll have to add to our standard operation procedure that basically I'm just going to tell them they'll do it. You know, you're not going to, you're not going to go out and write tickets and stuff like that. You know, this is basically to take care of business with the school. That's it.
Well, now you have, you have SLEOs that live outside the county and they drive a car home to that county. If they see a drunk driver, they not going to pull them over? Wouldn't they be obligated to pull someone over for them?
Well, they'd be obligated to pull them over, but they would wait for, they'd wait for that county officer to respond to it and let them take it over. They would be a witness to it then. Wouldn't they?
Yes.
But they're not, to be honest with you, I don't think they're going to be out looking for that stuff like they would when we worked for the Winchester police and stuff like that.
And they would also be considered an off-duty officer at that point and not an on-duty officer. So that, to your point, that might also protect them from that obligation.
I thought even an off-duty officer has the same obligation if they see a crime being committed or.
Well, we have, we can, we can act upon it. We have, with this pass, we can act upon it. Now, when we're off duty right now, no, you don't, you don't turn a blue light on and pull nobody over.
No, but with that, you would.
With this, yes, we could do that. You know.
Would you be obligated though, almost in a sense?
Yeah, you, you know, but, but yes, you know, we're going to save lives. You know, that's what we're trained to do, you know? And if we pull somebody over and detain them, then so be it. You know, that's a, you know, it's not going to, it's like I was telling you there, you know, like if they, if someone, you know, live out of county and they drive up onto an accident, they're not going to write the accident up. They're just going to sit there and wait for the unit to be there, you know, one of those, their units to come to write the accident up. Because, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff we don't have the capabilities of doing anymore because we don't have, we don't have the technology and stuff like their departments and stuff do. That's why we rely on them a lot of times. And this is just a little, this is just a little bit of stuff to take some of the, what we rely on them on. That's just like what Sheriff's talked about. If they're busy, we can least act upon it, you know, instead of just being a witness to it. But to be honest with you, whenever I went out on a home business stuff, I'd act anyways, you know? But you got to understand, I'm putting myself under liability, but I'm going to save somebody. It doesn't matter to me, I will save somebody if that's what it takes. But civilly, it was putting me into a situation I shouldn't be in. But this here would take it back out to where I'm acting under the letter of the law instead of acting out as a civilian instead.
Yeah, it's a, personally, I know that it will limit your liabilities on any actions. And really, this basically is policy and procedures and everything is written, like you're talking about traffic stops or whatever, exigent circumstances, not just willy-nilly, I'm out here and hey, he's going too fast or whatever. It's for exigent circumstances.
But I got a really good feeling that my guys ain't going to be doing that. You know, I can't stop for them, but I really feel like they would. And like, like you said though, if it's a drunk driver, it's obvious, yes, I believe they would act upon it. You know, because they would act upon it anyways if they were going. upon it, you know, because they would act upon it anyways if they were going home, because they would be on their phone calling, saying, hey, you need to get somebody out of there. You know, and nine times out of ten, if it was real bad, even if we didn't have jurisdiction, it's easy to turn them blue lights on and make them think you do, but you know, we're really stepping on our boundaries when we do that, but if it saves a life, so be it, I guess, you know?
Do we have enough information to make, make a vote, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the amendment to the inner local agreement creating, creating the Bluegrass and Central Kentucky Unified Police Protection Systems backups. And authorizing the superintendent and the chief of Clark County School Division of Law Enforcement to sign all relevant documents.
A second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Zeroes, thank you.
Okay. And we're to finance update, so.
Nine A.
Nine A.
Added about the field, Mr. Dameron here, will be able to have a little bit more context.
Sorry, Alicia.
Not my turn.
Mr. Dameron, do you mind coming up, please?
I phased you out.
You and Julie.
Hello.
Hello.
Can you give us an update on where we stand with our, from our vandalism?
From the vandalism we had, I think it was right after Thanksgiving, the last Saturday in November, at the Justice Elementary Field, they cut the fence, got in, they cut all the bar copper wire on all the pole lots, which some of that's been replaced, some hasn't. The fence has been wired back together, but that is it. After further investigation at that location, they did break into the outbuilding at Conkret Elementary, installed some out, some lawn equipment, we had weed eater stall, leaf blower, and a couple of gas cans, and I think that was due to nothing, was in the concession stand too steel. Now, we had somebody out there last week said that a window was gonna have to be replaced when they broke in, the window will not open back up once it has been closed. But Mr. Stump said we was gonna wait till the spring, and kind of get the ball rolling back on that and see exactly what the use on that field was gonna be.
So what are we, what are we doing with electric, to get that back up?
But everything is working, it was just an additional ground wire, so the poles are actually grounded, but there's a ground wire that actually goes up in the conduit that's fed from the panel, panel, so the poles are actually still grounded, so there's really, other than digging the pole back up or driving a ground rod, there's nothing we can add back. So we felt that there's really nothing that is a safety factor that needed to be redone on that. If we went and installed ground rods, we would have a piece of copper pipe sticking up out of the ground, probably inch, inch and a half, and would create a lot of trip hazards around the poles.
So all the electrics working there?
Yes, everything is working there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here tonight too, sir, thank you.
Megan, I'm going to have to go, I'm not going with that, I just wanted to let you know, I didn't want to just up and leave you.
No, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
You go on, go on, I don't want to keep you all there any later, you can go ahead.
At least she's ready to go home.
This momma's tired.
Yeah.
Okay, finance update, ten, number ten, review of the second quarter finances for the general fund, Superintendent Ward Bowe, and ten.
All right, so I wanted to try to give the sheriff kudos before he left, we're at a ninety-nine percent collection rate on our taxes, so great news on property taxes. So looking at the quarter review compared to the prior two years, we are really kind of spot on where we have been. There's no major outlying concerns of anything I'm seeing, like I said, exciting news that we're at that, that collection rate for our taxes. Is there anything you all had questions on? So that's the revenues, and the same thing with the expenses, we're spot on from where we were last year, twenty-eight percent spend, twenty-eight percent spend last year, that's down a little bit from the prior two years at thirty-two percent. Again, no major concerning things, a couple categories that are up, just so you all know, is our professional services, part of that is, we did increase the sheriff's commission, so that's where that falls, you're seeing sixty percent in that O three hundred series versus forty-one percent last year, the bulk of that has to do with the sheriff's commissions, and we are contracting custodial services this year versus not doing that in prior years, that's a new thing for us, is, because we've had a hard time finding that position. So you know, that made payroll go down, but it made this spot go up. Also, the O five hundred purchase services, you'll see that's at fifty-eight percent compared to twenty-five the year before. The biggest part there is the restructuring of how we pay our insurances, we are now paying our workers' comp insurance quarterly premiums, and we didn't do that in prior years, we kind of paid it lump sum at the end of the year. The way they billed us, it was different companies, we're with different companies now, the way it got bid out this year, so that's the biggest bulk is the insurance premiums. So, those are your major expense issues. Any questions or things you all saw when you were looking at the quarter expenses? I mean, really, like I said, we're spot on from where we've been in the prior two years, honestly, at this point in time.
Any questions? Agenda item, excuse me, number eleven, review of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three draft budget.
Okay, so this is a requirement that we have to meet by July, January, July, I've already got us in July, January thirty-first, you all have to review a draft budget per the KRSs. So basically, like, at this point, it's really hard to project and know what really is gonna be happening, I mean, you know, every, those of you who have been on the board for a couple of years, we stood here a year ago and had a very dire situation, and then now we have been flooded with federal funding, and we've had the opportunity to, you know, maintain a staff level that our general fund would not have allowed us to maintain, because we had these grant funds. But, so it's, it's good news, actually, sitting here looking at, we are still being flooded with funding, we still have lots of federal funding, and if you're following legislation, they are providing more funding for public school in the next biennium. That's concerning on one hand too, though, so it's exciting that we are being supported by our government in public education, but it's also concerning at some point, the funds will run dry. But it does make our budget projections look pretty nice right now. So, just SEEK is affected by property dollars. So I've reached out to PVA, Mr. Neely, and economy's doing great, even with COVID, the economy locally, the economy for the state of Kentucky is doing good, which is also why the governor's budget and the House bill is doing good.
Ms. Wallace, I'm sorry, can we go to the presentation, Mr. Elliott?
The PowerPoint instead of, sorry about that, I wasn't even paying attention, I'm on my PowerPoint.
I don't know which one that is, but I was, yes.
Yeah, it says.
It should be the document prior to both of those, in the lineup, the presentation right there.
And click through, next, next, right here is where I'm at right now, essentially, is on the revenues.
Yeah, thank you.
So our SEEK, again, we are frozen, but at our ADA, right now, it's based on the four thousand per pupil legislation, they're actually increasing that to probably forty-one, forty-two, depending on what passes in legislation, so that could go up for us, that's great news. They're gonna fund transportation, full-day kindergarten, they're talking about funding the nickel match at a higher rate for our capital funds, so great news, but you'll see it says negative five sixty, part of that is property. It is a balancing act between our property, local dollars, and our state dollars. If you'll flip to the next one, as I said, I talked to Mr. Neely, and he is projecting three and a half to four percent increase in property values in our county this next year, we're, you know, it's, it's going up, so when that number goes up, our SEEK goes down. So it's this balancing act between those two, that yes, that's good news, but state funding goes down because of it. But overall, when we look at historical average, average budgets, SEEK and property, and looking at what we are projecting to roll our beginning balance, because right now, I am projecting, you all are not gonna spend any more out of contingency, we're gonna hold that budget and roll it over. So with all of that, we're really increasing our revenues a little over six hundred thousand dollars in the next year's budget, with the way this one was built. Again, things can change, we've got revenue sources flowing in that might add to it, we just have to kind of wait and see come that May budget, because again, it's hard to really project right now. But you'll see with the next slide, please, that's just kind of a quick summary of total revenues, your beginning balance, so your overall recurring receipts, if you pull that beginning balance out, is sixty-two thousand dollars. So the bulk of what we're rolling over is really our beginning balance. Okay, any questions on the revenue side? All right, so let's jump into expenditures. So, also on the expenditure side, we have decreased some expenditures, so throughout the year, there's several things that have occurred that have, are kind of accumulating to this, but the two big categories is obviously your salaries and benefits, and then our operational side. So salaries and benefits are going up, but part of that has to do with rank and step raises, it has to do with our retirement rates and our tentative budget that Dr. McComas kind of spoke about, and we're trying to weed off those employees that we have on the ESER funds. So you know, the long-term plan is, we've had nineteen people on there this year, we're trying to do like a third each year to get them off, so that when those funds run out, one, the staffing allocation's gonna be more in line of where it really should be, but we have nobody on grant funding that's part of that staffing allocation. So in doing all of those changes, we're actually increasing our salary and benefits budget right now by about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Excuse me, the operational side, the major things that are going on there is, one-time expenditures coming off, you all approved several summer projects this past year, that got rolled into this budget cycle, because we didn't get them completed by that June date, we had a lot of stuff we did in July and August, well, it's rolled into this year and part of this year's budget. And so with that, and then we implemented a new district-wide phone system that cost us about two hundred thousand dollars. So when you pull all of that off, we're talking about eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars were coming out of the budget that we know we're not gonna spend next year. Also, we're gonna start with this budget cycle, budgeting minimum that is required for our Section Six, whereas this year right now, we gave them the full hundred and forty dollar, one hundred percent Section Six. That could very much change as we look at staffing allocations and go forward with our budget, we might be back up to that one hundred percent, one forty per ADA, but right now, we're starting with a hundred. Again, adjustments in budgets and utilities, one of the larger expenses is bringing our athletic complex online, you'll see that's about four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for security and utilities, that is not something that is in our current budget. It's really kind of operating under GRC's blanket of the schools part, but we really need to separate that out to athletic and the school, and it's, it's gonna be a significant increase with all the facility that we brought on.
And we will be adding that to our list of goals that we're working on, is developing a plan that's gonna allow us to have more flexibility too with maintenance. So like now, when we have all of these amazing events, some of them don't even include our, our students. And, you know, so it's great, we've got these facilities and they're beautiful, but when there is damage or something, you know, something just happens, not that anybody's been malicious or abused, you know, abused our properties, that money is coming back through our facilities. So we've already started structuring how much of that facility use rental is gonna go to GRC, how much is gonna come back to central office, that Masellus is gonna start putting in a budget for maintenance. It's like, you know, drops in a bucket, though, so we are gonna have to build a budget that's gonna have, that's gonna have to maintain some of the operational costs, as well as maintenance for the athletic facilities. So we, we know that's an issue, and we're gonna be working very closely with AD's principals and Mr. Stump's team to make sure that we have a better plan moving forward for that.
You know, I don't know how much this would affect anything, but I lived that way, and I go by the house school a lot, and there's a lot of times that whole complex is lit up and there's nobody in there. So there's energy being spent, but you know, there's a lot of times.
Yeah, and I can talk with them about that, one of the Jumbotron, somebody told them that they had to keep it on all the time, and so we found out that wasn't true. So we don't have to keep the Jumbotron on, I'm sorry, Ms. Wallace.
No, you're fine.
But just, I just wanted to make that note.
Yeah. It is, isn't it?
It is, yeah, I mean, it's on, it's not all the time, but it's, a lot of times.
A lot of times.
Yeah. So is it just to show off? Maybe.
Maybe. It's a beautiful facility, we want everybody to see it.
It would be pretty to drive that way, though.
It looks like a, like an airport.
And that might be a safety, I don't know.
Yeah.
You're fine, no, it's part of the discussion. If you'll flip to the next slide, this is just kind of a summary of the expenditures again, total budgeted expenditures, less the contingency, you see the contingency's actually going up. The way we restructure the budget, we're putting some money back into contingency and not spending all of our reoccurring dollars, which is good news. So with that, we're, you know, the overall savings is that three hundred and four total, and then if you'll flip to the next slide, this is our percentage of contingency. So the way you figure the percentage of contingency, you actually do lump in food service with part of that, and so we're at a thirteen point eight percent, which is a very comfortable number for me as your finance officer. I like more fifteen, but I'm, I'm comfortable as long as we're above twelve. So that's a good, we're good with contingency. And then the last slide for general fund.
Some districts would love to have half of that.
Yes, they would, that is very, very nice, there's a lot of districts who are right at that two percent marker under it, so I mean, we are, we're doing well as a district when you look at that. So we are actually projecting an excess of a little over a million. Again, just remember, things to consider going forward that are not in this budget is, there's twelve positions still on ESER funds that we've gotta make sure there aren't there in two more years. And then we're, we're working on that wage comparability study, we wanna try to bring a recommendation to you all of increasing our salaries for our staff, that's not in here right now, you know, that's gonna increase the budget on the salary side. And then just mindful of when these funds go away, you know, like, so let's, so we want to see excess, because we want to be mindful of the future, we wanna plan and not spend everything right this minute, even though we do have a very healthy contingency, I mean, we do have a very healthy contingency in budget, as Dr. McComas referred to most districts, but we still just need to be very mindful of that for future. So that's general fund really fast, any major questions you all have, or things you wanna So the rest of the budget presentation, Fund Fifty-One, Ms. Becky, as you know, she has, COVID has hit their fund pretty hard, but this has been actually a better year for her, being back in school, she has gotten some more revenue, and so right now, we're just kind of looking at current year expenditures and operations of how she addressed her budget for next year. We left the beginning balance the same, because you know, revenues have gone up, but expenditures have gone up, you know, she stood before you on several occasions about the supply shortage, but also the cost of all of that, you know, increases her expenditures. We just had a major incident at preschool, unfortunately, that she's having to replace equipment now, that wasn't in the budget, so expenditures go up, revenues go up, but we're not really sure how we're gonna still end the year at this point, so we left the beginning balance the same.
And we did sign an emergency letter today, so that we can bypass the, so that we can expedite the purchasing process to get her equipment for.
So with that, right now, we're saying her budget's gonna go up about one hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars next year overall, in the scheme of things, but that's still, you know, very preliminary, we'll see how we end, end the year for her, so. And then the rest is our capital funds, that, I mean, that's driven by certain formulas, three-ten, three-twenty, and then for, for, Fund Four Hundred, our debt service, I mean, there's no major anything there unless you all have questions, it's just standard of, we've gotta plug those numbers into our budget and pay those things, capital covers your debt, we've got some excess funds in capital, about seven hundred thousand, that you can have capital funds requests, you can put it towards the preschool, so there's some options there, like we've had this year with our capital funds, for next year as well. We've got some excess funds in capital, about seven hundred thousand that you can have capital funds requests. You can put it towards the preschool. So there's some options there like we've had this year with our capital funds for next year as well. So that is the budget, quick overview.
Any questions?
No.
Good. Okay, so while I'm standing here, I just want to direct your attention to the consent items that are the finance, twenty-two through thirty-two is all me. So while I'm up here, are there any questions about any of those that you all would like to address before I sit back down? Okay, couple highlights I just want to point out. On there is the School Facilities Construction Commission. This is their biennial. Every year, they offer us our debt, so this is part of the bonding potential that we have to go towards the preschool. So that's just an annual, they do that every two years, so we have to accept that to be able to sell that bond, essentially, is what that amounts to. And then, like I said, I wanted to just acknowledge motor vehicle and sheriff, they're, I mean, we're collecting taxes on that. We're staying right on track with motor vehicles. We're right up with this January payment you're seeing in this package, forty-eight percent collection, which is right where we've been the last several years, and we always end up collecting pretty much one-hundred percent of those. And then Sheriff Purdue, he's right at ninety-nine percent with our sheriff taxes with the January payment we just got. So that's fantastic news. Otherwise, that's all of that. Okay?
Any questions?
Thank you all.
We need to make a motion to acknowledge that we...
You'll do that.
I would just...
No, I'll leave her.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It says review.
It says review. Yeah. Do you still make a motion that you acknowledge the review of the...
But did we double put it in here because we've got acknowledged? Is that a separate one?
It should be in the consent.
Oh, never mind. That's the general fund budget summary.
I have number twelve when you motion.
Yeah, yeah, so you do.
I'd like a motion to, you're right, to acknowledge the review of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three draft budget. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All of them favored? Motion carries four to zero. Internal Board Business, twelve, consider approval of second reading of amendments to student representative policy zero one point one, Dr. McComas and Ms. McCoy.
I'll defer to Ms. McCoy. She did the edits from our last conversation. All of the things that she had reviewed were put into the student board representative policy zero one point one.
I mean, the changes we discussed at the last meeting, but KSBA drastically reformatted it. They didn't change the content, but they did change the formatting quite a bit, but I don't mind their revisions. I think it makes it a little easier to read, actually. So that's provided in the packet. Any questions about those changes?
Any discussion? I'd like a motion to approve the second reading of the amendments to the student representative board policy zero one point one.
I'll second.
Okay. All those, any additional discussion? All of them favored?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
Oh, you said that? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion carries three to zero.
Three, three one, eight one.
Sorry. It's, um...
Well, it's Ashley.
Yeah.
Ms. Ritchie not being here, I think her vote goes with the majority, our board policy.
No.
No, she just counted out.
Yeah.
Okay. Consider approval of second reading of amendments to the Roberts Rules of Order policy referencing zero one point four, Dr. McComas, Ms. McCoy.
Again, that's, KSBA didn't have any changes to our revision, so it's just to add the language, "our board policy of the board" to Rules of Order.
Any questions or discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. And all of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four one. Or four, four zero, sorry. Sorry, sorry. And consider approval for board members and superintendent to attend the KSBA Annual Conference February twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, at the Louisville Marriott convention center. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Number fifteen, consider the...
Ms. Hendricks, just want to let you know, I did find out today that the hotel, the Louisville Marriott, is full.
Oh, okay.
So I'll need you to get your information into me as soon as possible, and I'll try to see what alternate hotels they're using.
And not the only one that's not committed?
No. None of those. None of them.
None of us have committed.
Okay. People haven't been anywhere in a long time. They're ready to go.
And we're using the courtyard. There's a couple because I booked my courtyard spring.
Yeah, and I'm down there anyway with other superintendents, so.
Yeah, we were getting the Marriott, but I don't think your room was...
Oh, we didn't do all the dates?
No.
Looks like I'm...
Because they kind of break up.
Okay.
Hotel six.
I know.
Yeah, Red Roof.
Okay, all right, guys. Concerning the approval of allocation of project graduation amount of twenty-five hundred dollars, Mr. Keane and Mr. Harris.
Okay, Mr. Keane went to the game tonight. Just to try to speak there, if I run over anything, feel free to ask me questions. And so more or less, project graduation is just a big get-together end of the year. After graduation, I think it starts at eleven-thirty that night. It's at GRC. They provide, they being senior parents, they get together.
So it is the night of graduation and not the day, night after?
I believe it's night of.
Typically, it's the night of.
It's typically prior to graduation.
When we had talked at first, someone told me the night after, which didn't make sense to me, so I'm glad to hear that it's the night of. Okay.
Yes, night of from eleven-thirty PM to six AM. So parents get together, fundraise. Their goal this year is twenty thousand dollars. That'll cover food and gifts that aren't donated. Also, they put together little swag bags of like t-shirts, merch, I don't know what to call it. This year, they're asking for twenty-five hundred. I think that that's a very modest ask. On the last year, the board approved ten thousand, and anything that we get from the board, we will be super grateful for, and I just want to know that it won't hinge in the other fundraising efforts. Did I miss anything? I sent it to you ahead of time, so I just sent it to you.
No, you did. I thought you had really get into the weeds on all of the activities and stuff. I was like, he kind of stand a little bit.
I don't know.
You can, you can, you're free to...
Yeah, he has a lot of stuff here, so he's done some research with a counselor, talked with Mr. Keane. Sounds like a great night.
Okay, so we're just going to hang out. I think they're going to get a DJ so we can just dance, that kind of thing, and I love to dance, so I'm excited. Different foods will be served every couple of hours, so on here they list hamburgers, hot dogs, pizza, nacho pizza, nacho bar. Prizes will be given away the morning of, so you can't just come eleven-thirty, get your prizes and then dip or leave. Everyone will leave with something. Mr. Keane wanted me to note that, so it wasn't just like, you go and if you get something, you leave.
That part, that was really cool.
Okay. Gifts depend on donations and how much we fundraise, but they typically consist of five-hundred-dollar scholarships, a MacBook, unisex dorm items, mini fridges, microwaves, tickets to maybe concerts or sporting events, that kind of thing.
So definitely a worthy cause.
Mm-hmm. And...
I mean, I really would like to see it double, at least.
I would like to make, I agree. I would think that we could hopefully steer some more money that way. I would like to make the motion to approve the initial amount and to give Dr. McComas to do some...
Thank you very much, but I appreciate that Ms. Constanan was worried about that earlier, and so I had opportunity to go over and speak with Masellus because I was worried about the twelve thousand. It was technically twenty-five hundred last year was an additional ten thousand that was given, so they received twelve-five last year. So my next ask was, what do they do historically? It was always the twenty-five hundred dollars. I said, I'm feeling like the board's going to want us to be able to provide more. We feel like moving forward, we can consistently sustain around fifty-five hundred dollars.
Okay.
And so, and I felt like that was conservative. And then when there are other opportunities that you all want to explore, if I can have that time ahead, I do really appreciate it because then we can come with a better decision for you.
Right.
So we, I did have a sheet left. Yeah, I wrote it down when she and I talked about it. So historically, it's been twenty-five hundred. Last year, it was twelve-five. Moving forward, we feel comfortable with fifty-five hundred dollars.
And if they're pretty close to reaching their goal, and Mr. Harris can, you can come back hopefully and tell us and see.
I'm glad you said that. I left out, Ms. Miracle, she's Mariner, Ms. Ball wanted me to let you all know that if any of you all want to attend on their meetings, they are the last Thursday, the first Thursday of every month at GRC in the library.
Okay, thank you so much, too. That was good information.
So one more time, what amount did you say we're good for?
Fifty-five hundred.
Yeah, what bucket is that coming out of?
The same, I don't want to say the same bucket. It's general funds, but she had already set up an allocation to be used for like student services when needs came up, and there were some other things that didn't have an ask that typically would have been, so she had some flexibility within. She didn't tell me what they were or what they were not, but we listened, she told me about the funds that we had available, and it was, and I don't want to say we could give more. We could, but I also want to make sure I protect some of those things so that as other stuff come up, then I can have some flexibility with that, too.
Got you.
Mm-hmm. But it's the same fund out of the general account that was earmarked for these types of things.
Good.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To allocate fifty-five hundred to project graduation.
I'll second.
Okay, who wants it?
I'll take it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Constanan, the second, and Mr. Tawley. All of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you, Lauren.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That was a good one. Good motion. Okay, and consent items sixteen through thirty-one.
Yeah, we can start doing all of those together.
You will, because she, okay. Consent items sixteen through thirty-two.
I make a motion.
Okay, I'll second. Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Which, who seconded?
I think it was me. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second. Constanan.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. We're adjourned at nine fifty-two.